Good evening. It being 5:32 PM on Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, I call this meeting of the Westboro Select Board to order. If you are willing and able, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will point out that in our posted agenda, there are a number of open positions, town manager appointed and select board appointed committees. So, anyone here this evening or watching livestream or later on any of the Westboro TV playback mechanisms who have an interest in volunteering and serving your community, please get in touch with the town manager and the select board office. They will be happy to match you to available opportunities to serve. We won't read through the list. Keep the meeting on time. We won't read through the list here tonight. I also believe the Westboro TV has been scrolling these feeds on their channels at various times. We have a pretty full agenda this evening. That was, again, visible from Westboro TV. Anyone here present this evening is welcome to grab an agenda from the bin over at the end of the counter. First item on the agenda is a peace swearing in and promotion ceremony. So I will hand the floor over to Chief Ford.
So, the last time we met, we swore a number of officers and supervisors. And I told you then that, you know, I've hired 17 people, just over three and a half, and promoted eight. And it's always exciting to introduce to you the talented staff that make up the Westboro Police Department, your police department. So, we're going to start this evening with Officer Jonathan Hale. Officer Hale, his hometown is Orleans, Mass. on Cape Cod. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Northeastern University. He's currently in his last semester obtaining his master's degree from that same university, one of the better programs in the nation. His previous department was with the Sherborne, Massachusetts Police Department. He started work here on 1-1, 2020. He's a member of the Community Engagement Team and Honor Guard at the Westboro Police Department. He couldn't make the last thing because he was on his honeymoon and his wife Nora will be pining him today. And that's Officer Jonathan Hale. I now ask Officer Joseph Kobe Lawyer to please come forward. Officer Lawyer, his hometown is Ghana, West Africa. He moved to Worcester, Mass., to the United States, to the city of Worcester in 2003. He's a graduate of Berko High School in Worcester. He has a bachelor's degree from Newbury College. His previous departments, he worked for the Worcester County Sheriff's Department as a correction officer. He then became a police officer. His journey began for the Metropolitan Police Department in Washington DC. He worked in District 7, which is probably one of the most dangerous areas of Washington DC to work. Worked there for two years before he transferred to the New Britain Police Department in Connecticut, New Britain, Connecticut. Officer Lawyer was excited to have an opportunity to return home and thankfully, he decided to come to the Westboro Police Department. Officer Lawyer will be pinned by his daughter Zuri and Mother Christie. With that being said, if I could have the clerk come forward?
Let's hope you both raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the constitutions and laws thereof? And that you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as your patrol officer for the town of Westboro and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government and of the town of Westboro Police Department? So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you. For those that are pinning our offices, please come forward. Congratulations, Officer. I'd like to thank the board again.
The next item on our agenda is open forum, which is an opportunity for residents to come and present information or ideas to the select board. Cathy Abil's forum policy is on our website. Just a quick reminder that we ask people to keep comments within the three minutes of time allotted for each speaker. Normally, we don't take advance reservations. We have a number of people contact the office and ask to speak. And so I've got some names in front of me, people who I believe are in the audience today. I'll call them up. The time on the agenda for open forum is 10 minutes. And about that time, for additional people who are still waiting to speak, we will continue open forum as the last item on the agenda. Follow all other items except for the executive session, which will be forming the journey to executive session this evening. And so, it's Mr. O'Donnell, I believe. When you begin, please state your name and your address for record.
My name is Carol McDonald and my address is 293 Turnpike Road, Apartment 815 in Westboro.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'm here to speak against the proposition to remove Columbus Day due to its importance to Italian-American Christian communities and to speak out against the diversity and inclusion's lack of transparency and lack of community input in forming this recommendation to eliminate the holiday. I'd like to thank everybody that came here. And I'm very moved to be here because there are all these signs of the past. And we're talking about Christopher Columbus. And the signs that we have in this room are a sign of the past matters of the present. So, let us recall, in the summer of 2020, Westboro shut down due to COVID. Kara Presley, the chairperson of the Diversity Inclusion Committee, entertained a resident petition on the subject of removing Columbus Day. The mandate of the committee is to review town services to ensure that services are provided equally and are accessible to all residents. In further, to identify ways to promote increased diversity and improve citizens' town services, employment, and volunteer opportunities. From a prima facie viewpoint, the change of holiday seems outside the committee's scope as Columbus Day is not a town service. Indeed, 2,000 residents where I live have not had access to say pedestrian prossum for years. And it seems that that doesn't matter to the DNI committee. As town leaders, it is your duty to safeguard our interests including monitoring the activities supporting the committees. The DNI committee has greatly changed since you created it. Perhaps it has been attempting to reinvent itself based on recent national controversies. After all, according to Sergeant Michael Daniels, there has only been one hate crime and one religious incident in Westboro in 10 years. The committee meets at 3:00 PM shutting out working people like myself. The chair has no time group, has had no time to routinely place minutes and agendas for months. And the minutes are vague and there is usually two days' notice. I don't think that due process is followed. The petition to remove Columbus Day presented to the committee was a self-fulfilling prophecy where it was inherently biased against Columbus as a person with no regard to historical fact. This is the opposite of diversity and inclusion. The viewpoint of 10% per population, thus to say, Italian-Americans and genuinely scholarly experts was not even thought of. Instead outsiders were given a forum, but local residents remained uninformed and even excluded. It is un-American to presume guilt, cite revisionist historians, and deny access to Bible data to the public. History is not a headline, but a conversation to be had with clear eyes, impartiality, and an open spirit. I previously wrote these sentiments to the DNI committee, to Kara Presley, and I don't think she took it into account. I now ask you to see history the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Black?
Good evening. My name is Joe Black. I live in 11 Old North Street. I represent the Westboro Knights of Columbus Council, AD5, which has performed charitable acts for our community for over 125 years. I stand here in opposition to the petition to replace Christopher Columbus Day, a national holiday, with Indigenous Peoples' Day. We fully support any courage to separate holiday for Indigenous peoples, but not at the expense of Christopher Columbus Day remembrances. Both can be observed in the spirit of tolerance, inclusion, understanding, and appreciation of history. I would ask the board to consider the following. Petition seeks to remove Columbus based on an unexamined interpretation of history and lacks the appropriate scholarship to support its conclusion. This issue deserves a fair decision based upon facts, not speculation, motion, or sympathy. Closed action is damaging to our understanding of the diverse aspects of this period of history. Fair evaluation requires a reasonable period of fact finding. This includes hearing witnesses who can provide intellectual honesty to the discussion. Perhaps experts who rigorously researched source documents from over 500 years ago could provide an educated opinion on the subject. Petitionists have had a year to appear to petition the Columbus less than 30 days. Facts are incomplete and the town has not had an opportunity to evaluate it. In the interest of fundamental fairness, several reasonable options exist here. First, deny the petition. August 9th is already recognized as the International Day of World's Indigenous Peoples, rendering the proposal that issue moot. Two, deny the petition. An act of establishing Indigenous Peoples' Days now before the Massachusetts Legislature, or it will be fully vetted. Three, create a Westboro study group perhaps, enabling research Colombian history by a broader representation of townspeople reporting back to the select board. Four, set a public hearing to gather further information for this board. Five, convene a special town meeting to allow the issue to be cited by the residents after sufficient time for discovery, expert analysis, and hearing witnesses. Finally, present the issue as valid question. All options be considered. We appreciate the time and consideration regarding this most important answer to the issue. Thank you.
Mr. Beadleary?
Thank you for letting me speak here today. Regarding the Columbus Day proposal, I support.
Your name and address for record.
Oh, sorry. It's Steve Beadleary, 9 Thomas Wood Drive.
Thank you.
Regarding the Columbus Day proposal, I support keeping Columbus Day and adding in Indigenous Peoples' Day on a different day than Columbus Day. I would like to talk about the historical aspect of Columbus and his achievements and the inaccuracies of some of the more egregious accusations against him. These are a very small sampling from the document I provided to the select board, which also contains more historical details and references to resources for these selected items. One of the historical aspects is Columbus's motivation and intent, which was to find an all-water route to Asia by sailing west and to set up a trading post to obtain gold and spices. There was absolutely no intent of enslaving or killing people. Another historical aspect is why we celebrate Columbus Day. We celebrate it because it commemorates a major historical event. He was one of the, he was the one whose voyage to the New World was by far the most historically impactful. Even if others visited the New Continent sporadically before Columbus did, their voyages had no significant, no historical significance. His first voyage was the beginning of a permanent cultural exchange between the Americas and the rest of the world. One of the benefits of historical significance that was brought to the New World was Greek democracy, Roman law, Judeo-Christian ethics, and the tenet that all people are created equal. In other words, the pillars upon which Western civilization is built. Columbus Day is also a celebration of Columbus as a brilliant, courageous, risk-taking navigator and celebrates his spirit of entrepreneurship, ingenuity, and perseverance against the odds which have come. These traits and attributes have come, become hallmarks of America. Some of Columbus's amazing accomplishments were that he was the first European to realize the full importance of the Atlantic wind patterns called the prevailing Westerlies, which gave him confidence that he could return to Spain. Columbus's transatlantic route laid the foundation for future navigation into the region. And Columbus crossed the ocean that no one thought was possible and he did it in just 33 days. Columbus's diaries give valuable insights into how he felt towards Indigenous people. They contain numerous references throughout to Indigenous people being exceptional in many ways. And still more diary entries profess the love and admiration he had for them. This does not seem like someone who would commit genocide, enslave, steal, or bring harm to Indigenous people. Now about the inaccuracies and accusations against Columbus. Among the allegations against Columbus is genocide, slave trading, racism, theft of native lands, and generally inflicting great harm on Indigenous peoples. However, numerous scholarly articles, books, and original sources exist by people like noted anthropologist Carol Delaney, Raphael Ortiz, and respected historian Mary Graber that address and disprove these claims that are made against Columbus. And I've brought a couple of books here and they've been provided to the select board. Time does not allow me to present significant actions Columbus took to help the Indigenous people. But again, there are many in the document that I provided to the select board.
Thank you.
Just a quick word about genocide and then a.
Very quick. You're well over the three minutes, please.
Okay. Thank you. The loss of Indigenous peoples' lives, especially through the mid and early, the mid 1500s and early 1600s was estimated by scholars to be at least 80% caused by diseases contracted from Spaniards for which the Indigenous people had no immunity. That by any definition is not genocide. And similarly, I have information, a lot more information about that in what I passed out. And similarly, information for the other topics about Columbus being a slave trader, stealing Indigenous peoples' lands, and that he was a racist. So, in closing, I'd just like to say this is an important, impactful change that's being considered and it requires more time than is allotted in a forum like this. So I hope the select committee decides to convene a more appropriate vehicle to allow the time to do research on both sides and make presentations on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. As we are a few minutes ahead of the timing on the agenda, I'll invite up, again, I'm bad with names, Mr. Nascondeglio. Please come forward if you want to speak now.
Good evening. My name is Ken Nascondeglio. I live at 43 Warner Street. I've been living in Westboro for approximately 26 years. I'm here to oppose the change to Columbus Day. And what I have in front of me is three weeks of work of getting petition signatures, also to keep Columbus Day. About 209 signatures in less than three weeks. 166 from Westboro, 43 from non-Westboro. I can leave this with you folks. I'm here to give you a little perspective on what it means, Columbus Day means to be, to Italian people. I grew up in an all-Italian neighborhood. Italians were mistreated. My grandparents came here during a time when there were peak periods of prejudice. There were lynchings. Presidents said there were appropriate lynchings. Future governor of Louisiana organized the lynchings. And he said, quote, "Times were just a little worse than the Negroes." I didn't say that. He did. Italian shopkeepers were lynched because they were treating blacks, black customers equal to white customers. This is fact. The discrimination continued. During World War II, Italian-Americans were rounded up by the thousands and placed in internment camps. Their property was confiscated. The stereotype is still apparent in today's culture, portraying us all as mobsters and untrustworthy. Like I said, I grew up in an all-Italian community. We built our own churches, schools, and shops because we didn't feel wanted. We waited all year to celebrate our hero, Christopher Columbus, marching in the parade throughout the entire city. We weren't looked at. Our little community was looked at as being the bad part of town. Don't go there, okay? We walked around the city proud for one day of the year. The original, okay. Now, 100 years later, we're fighting against forces trying to exclude us, ironically in the name of diversion and diversity and inclusion. The original recognition of the holiday by Benjamin Harrison was an expression of love. This effort to remove it is based purely on vengeance. Why else would someone try to strip away something so precious to another when they already have their own? To the board, if this action is taken, it will create animosity amongst the townspeople, which is composed of 12% Italian-Americans. What do I tell my child when she says to me, Daddy, what happened to our holiday? I'll tell her the truth. Some people were so blinded by hate that they didn't see how much their actions were hurting others. To those pushing for this change, I pray that you find another way to deal with your hatred. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask by show of hands if there is anyone else interested in speaking in open forum on this topic this evening. I see one hand up. Given the timing, we will continue open forum until later in the agenda before we adjourn into executive session. And I will point out that the next item on the agenda is our discussion of next steps and discussion of scheduling a public listening session or public hearing on this issue. So, I'll move forward with that agenda item. So, given the volume of correspondence we've received, physical, electronic, the number of people interested in speaking at open forum, as well as reviewing the discussion among select board members at our last public meeting where the topic was discussed. The agenda item here tonight is not to make a decision on this, but to discuss and gauge the board's interest and if agreed upon, to schedule a public listening session at a time in the future, which would allow more time for community input and more time for residents and other interested parties to express their, you know, opinions for the board. I know in our packet, as we look at that going forward and then I'll, a few more comments I'll open up for discussion among the board. As we look, sort of given the timing of where we are, right now, we currently have, as a board, we have four meetings scheduled in September. We are in preparation mode for Fall Town Meeting mid-October. And we have, in addition to Fall Town Meeting, we have two additional meetings in October. It's not uncommon for us to have to schedule an additional meeting before the 14-day notice period to cover last-minute items related to town meeting as well. There was a suggestion of possibly doing the listening session in September. Two of those three dates are also a religious holiday. So, you know, I, just given the level of correspondence and discussion and the conversation we've had as a board as well, I would suggest that we look to schedule, whether we want it to be a public listening session or a more formal public hearing, that we look to schedule that sometime after Fall Town Meeting. And that we, that rather than making a decision, working to make a decision right now, we focus on making a decision that's right and taking the time to do so. So I'll open it up to the, to the board for any comment or discussion. Patrick?
Alan, just a question about what could we expect as a difference between a public hearing and an open public listening session? What would be the difference that the community could expect?
Do you want to?
Yeah, so it's, for this issue, it's the same. Public hearing has a statutory connotation to it because it's required by law for certain actions, largely related to actions that are taken by the planning board, also for certain licensing. So, this specific topic doesn't statutorily require a public hearing. And so, you know, recently, I became aware of calling it a public listening session in order to take away the statutory connotation. If the board's more comfortable with calling it a public hearing, that's certainly fine, but it's the same thing.
Thank you.
Ian?
First off, I apologize as the board knows and others may know that I wasn't able to attend our last meeting when this was discussed. I appreciate all the comments and correspondence that we've received and I agree with select person Edinburgh that this needs to be given proper time and proper ability for all those concerns to talk. So I'm fully supportive of moving this to a public listening session so this can be discussed. I think a comment that I heard is, a comment I think was Mr. Black tonight is that, you know, the timing that this was discussed within committee here in town was extensive. And having, I think it was 30 days for others to kind of come bad or offer their comments doesn't seem fair to me as well. So I think that in terms of date, I think we work something that allows folks ample time to prepare for us to advertise. I do think by the amount of correspondence that we've received that there are a lot of people that are interested in this topic. And I think we need to give them their time to speak and be heard for us. And I think there are other options that were suggested tonight. There is, as was mentioned as well, an action that potentially goes through the state where this will happen too. But as a town, I need some more education on my side too of what we actually can do as a town. It's a, as this being a holiday that's not a town holiday. It's a, I believe, a federal holiday. So I think that's some education on my side. So anyways. So, anyways, I don't want to belabor the point here, but fully supportive of us moving this forward to a, a public listening session. I agree that I don't think we need to have as a public hearing, which requires various things and it doesn't really rise to that level. So, whatever we call it, public forum, public listening session, putting it out there, ensuring that we properly advertise it though so people hear about it and, you know, we give it the time necessary and quite honestly, as we've done with other things, if it, if it takes more than one public listening session because we have that much interest, we, we go to more than one public listening session would be my suggestion on that. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Select Person Marshall.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I will try to not be redundant in my comments. First of all, I do want to thank the public for their significant outpouring of commentary that has been shared with the board, including books and other documents and research that they've undertaken. So, thank you very much. I am supportive of a listening session to be scheduled at some future date. But I do think that, as has been suggested, and we discussed this in our last meeting, that I think this goes beyond potentially a listening session and that there's some academic rigor that may need to be undertaken in order to further inform the board and inform the public. And there may be a cost associated with that, I'm not sure. And while I think that this is an important discussion for the town, it clearly has been based on the feedback we've received, we've received, excuse me. I am, I'm in a place that says, how much of a priority is this for us as a board right now? We have, not out of a pandemic, we've got a number of projects underway for the town and certainly more to come. And so, I think we need to balance, you know, time and resources and money as we look forward to the prioritization of this as a discussion, not only for this board, but for the town as a whole. I am supportive of listening sessions at a future date post-Fall Town Meeting, if that's the direction of the board.
Okay, thank you. Sean.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as well. I think, you know, September, unfortunately, there's a lot of preparation for Fall Town Meeting. I think it would be difficult for us to give this the attention it deserves and that has been requested of us to provide it on this evening. So, I have no problem with a, with a listening session put forward into November, you know. Yeah, I think as long as we commit to something here this evening that everybody can become aware of.
Okay. Kristi.
No, I was just gonna.
What?
I was just standing there for a second here, so just.
Right. Oh, make sure you're. Okay. So, I guess we could certainly entertain a motion to identify a specific date. The other option would be to have one or two members of this board collaborate, get a sense of the structure, you know, come up with a structure for that listening session and the information gathering and come back with a recommendation for, you know, how long it might take to pull that information together, to prepare, and come back with a recommendation for a date at a future meeting. I see two ways to go.
So, with that option, are you suggesting that some research would be done by two board members that would be brought forward in this listening session above and beyond what the community would bring forward?
Well, I, I think not necessarily. I mean, I think, you know, Shelby mentioned, we might want to invite speakers or experts in as part of that, not knowing who that would be or how long it would take to arrange. I would be, if that's something that we wanted to potentially include, I wouldn't want to set a date tonight and have to reschedule. It's more along those lines is my thought process.
Alan, if I may?
Yep.
So, what I thought you were suggesting is that two members of this board would undertake kind of an outline of what a public listening session would be structured like for listening sessions?
Yes.
Not so much to do the work. So, it might be researching who would be appropriate speakers, what costs that would be, and then bring that back to this board as a proposal to then determine next steps.
Correct.
So, oh, go ahead, Ian, sorry.
No, if you want to finish, that's fine.
So, as, as a representative of the board to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I'm certainly, I think it's appropriate that I be one of those two members. But I, if there are two other members of the board that wish to take those spots, I am certainly happy to give up that seat, so to speak.
Yeah, I was just going to say, to your first point, I don't know that I'm ready tonight to try to go through calendar or whatever. I think it sounds like we have agreement on the board to, to push this decision off to kind of look to schedule a public listening session. I do like the idea of evaluating it. I think Select Board Member Marshall's comments too in terms of priorities, it goes back to, like, I don't even know if November's the right time. There's a lot of things, if I even think about some other discussions we've had around Town Seal and the process we went through of even determining what to do there from the first time it came forward is much more extensive than even that. So, I think your idea of maybe taking two of us board members to look at this and perhaps work with the town manager and assistant town manager or whoever to figure out next steps and communicate that out makes sense. I'd be willing to put my name forward to work as well, but also am fine if, if other board members would like to do that. So, I volunteer, but I'm not, it doesn't have to be me either, but I'm very willing to do it.
Patrick, Sean.
Yeah, I'm fine. I think we're well-represented by Board Member Marshall and Board Member Johnson. And, you know, I'm looking forward to the recommendations that they may come back with.
Yeah, and I haven't said it yet, but I definitely support the idea of a listening session. I think that's a really good idea. I certainly have heard from the audience here tonight, from the folks, that I think it's important that there is more time allotted. I, I think that I'm a little bit, I guess I'm a little bit more desirable to move this quicker than slower. I understand that we have a lot on our plate over the next couple of months, but I think this is an important topic to the community. There's been a number of, a lot of work already done by Diversity and Inclusion when they brought this forward. I think a number of town residents here have brought their perspectives forward tonight. I would look to see at a session that those, you know, additional townspeople would be able to bring forward in a similar format to a hearing or a similar format that we had tonight where we gave each person three minutes' time and gave a certain allotted time during the listening session. I'm not sure if there's a more appropriate format for it. I would put my name out there too. As, as we all are on other boards and whatnot, there's a lot of work on our plate. But Ian, Shelby, I would certainly stick my name out there if you guys would like me to be one of those two individuals. I am a little concerned about the concept of going out and getting, you know, I'll say hiring experts to come in and speak on this. There's a lot of different aspects to this legally, certainly historically, et cetera. I'm not sure if that's really necessary for the board to be making a decision on this. I know that the Town Council has given us some perspective on the legal aspects of this already. So, I'm not sure if it really warrants that level of additional input. I'll say, I think we can get a lot of input from the community versus bringing in experts.
Ian and Shelby, I'm looking at you. We've got three people interested. I was gonna, I guess I'll, I'll, given that, my sense is that Shelby and Patrick have slightly different views, that it might be good to have the two of Shelby and Patrick square off and plan, come to consensus and, and, and plan and help us and take the lead in getting this scheduled.
I'm fine with that. I mean, it comes back to the board anyways, so I am very comfortable with that and.
I don't think we need a formal motion for this since it's just assignment of task. So, I think that's how we'll proceed.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, great.
Thank you to both of you.
Thank you, Shelby. And thank you, Shelby, for joining us from vacation remotely. Next on the agenda is site plan overview for 400 Freiberg Parkway.
Hello. My name is Mike Scott. I'm an engineer at Land Design Collaborative here in town. And I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless at 400 Freiberg. And John Soper?
Hi. John Soper, I work for Verizon. I've been with Verizon 25 years. I've been the main contact with Westboro throughout the years. We've done multiple projects at this location. So, I'm glad to be here. Thank you for listening to us tonight.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of slides on here. Perfect. Yeah. Yeah. Let's shut that again. All right, so give me a second to let this load up. But briefly, for the, if you know where Freiberg Parkway is, it's on the east side of town. And the Verizon building has been on the site since the late 90s, maybe roughly 20 years. And they are on the west side of the road as you go up from the low end of the road. They're up on the left after State Street. I apologize, got to log in here. And they have an existing building that's roughly 58,000 square feet. And John, you can tell them what goes on in that building?
Oh, okay. Yes. So, what that building is actually, at one time, maybe some people. They realize that it was a switch with a considerable office space with a lot of administrative people there. And as what's happening with Verizon right now, we're expanding quite a bit because of the 5G and other aspects of the business. So, we moved the people out of that location and then we moved them to Flanders Road because we needed that space for additional equipment. So, what goes on there now, it's basically, it's evolved into a data center. Before, it was like old-school switch, which more telecom or like AT&amp;T or like the old Bell system. But now, we converted it to a lot more router-based. They call it MEC, Mobile Edge Computing. So, it helps us all with our cell phones and to get 5G out there. So, that's really what is happening there now. And this is where, what we're, what we're going to do, we'd like to build another building next to the, not far from this building, and that'd be extension of that equipment.
So, what's on the screen on the left side here is what's out there today. So, this is their 60,000-square-foot building. This is Freiberg Parkway. The water tower is just off to the right off the screen. And they've essentially got parking along the side of the, the front and left side of the building. They have loading dock back here. And they need to expand this building by roughly 20,000 square feet. And structurally and just the internal works of what they have going on, all the HVAC, et cetera, it couldn't go up. And they can't go laterally because they recently put a generator area in, in this location on the site. And there's all kinds of fiber optic lines and other power sources redundant, everything to the building that runs through this part of the site. So, this is an existing parking area that had been used when this was an office building. There was significant parking required. It's no longer required because essentially, the building is primarily mechanical space. They've moved, the employees are on Freiberg, I mean, Flanders. Flanders Road now, so going back five or eight years in one of the Carruth buildings. So, what they're looking to do is put a building, and then what you see here in brown, it may be a little tough at this scale, but put another, essentially one of these buildings on this part of the site, reconfigure the parking at the front. Where there's presently parking right in this area, it would become lawn. And then around the back, there would be a loading space in that area. And the next view, something I can find what I'm looking for. Basically, this is just an enlargement of that, of that area. So, existing building at the upper-left parking lot, that's going to be covered with a building. And then here's the new building in this area. As I say, it's about 11,000 to 12,000 square foot footprint, double that for about 22, 23,000 square feet. And then at the rear, they'll have some generators and a loading area. So, the two-story building, the first floor will essentially be level with the parking lot. So, the back of this, on the south side and on the Freiberg side, that will be where you see two stories. Roughly one to three people in the building on a daily basis?
Yes, actually, there won't be additional employees for this. What we do right now, we have two employees during the day and then one at night. And they'll also monitor this new space. So, not really bringing more employees.
So, the site's fairly self-sufficient. All the utility connections would be made on-site. There's still roughly twice the parking that's required for the uses between the two buildings. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I did bring the full set of engineered drawings if anyone wants to look at that. The only major, other than all the minor utility changes, there's a stormwater system that's located under this parking lot that will be relocated to the side of the driveway. But otherwise, all the work is within the existing developed portion of the property.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Ian.
Yeah, I just had, I just had a couple. I think you answered one on the parking side, but I know it's the town plan is here too, but it said that it still has ample, with taking out this parking, it's still ample for the uses that will be here.
Correct. Yeah, it's roughly twice what's required.
Okay, perfect. And the second piece was, and pardon my ignorance here, but this, is this a, this is going to be a freestanding building is how I understand it?
Correct.
Is that? And I'm assuming that is allowed on this one.
Yeah, the town changed the zoning a few years ago to allow second, essentially principal uses. It's, it's an extension of, it's essentially the same use, just a smaller footprint.
Okay. And you may have said this, what, interesting, what's the size of first one, 60,000? Is this, did it, 20,000? Is that what?
It's 12 on, it's roughly 12 on two floors, so, I mean, 12, two floors, so 24 in that range, 23, 24.
Okay, perfect. No, no further questions on my side. Thank you.
Okay. Patrick.
Yeah, you mentioned that it meets the requirement. Is that the requirement, like, for parking? Is that the requirement for the business to operate or is that the requirement for the, the state's requirement on parking spaces?
It's the town, so I'm describing what it is relative to zoning. The, you're, right now, your parking lot's pretty much been filled with construction folks for the last few years, the times I've been up there. You're talking three or four employees and there's 30 spaces, 38 spaces.
Okay, just want to make sure it meets also the state requirements and the town requirements for parking.
Yes, and so, it will also leave, this site is essentially built to the maximum in terms of the amount of pavement that can be on the site. This reconfiguration actually increases the amount of green space nominally. So.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
And this isn't a place where you have lots of visitors?
No. No, so Freib, interestingly, Freiberg's a private road.
Yes.
You know, which they essentially pay to maintain along with the other neighbors. There is municipal sewer and water, I didn't mention that. Power, gas, and telecommunications come from Freiberg and you also get.
No, no gas.
Oh, sorry, that's right. They have no gas. There's a gas easement on their property, they don't bring it to the building. And then there's fiber and telecom and power from Connector Road as well that go up the hill.
No power, just fiber.
Oh, I thought they brought power up there as well. Okay, I misspoke. So, there is, there is a, if you were to drive down Connector, you'd actually see the, sort of the clearing swath up to the property as you pass it.
You mentioned you had other drawings. I'm just curious, do you have any elevations?
I may be able to show you those if, if I'm connected to Wi-Fi, which looks like I am.
If not, it's something you can maybe.
I do have them, they were included, but I don't know.
I didn't notice them in our packet, so.
I'll look. It's in the packet, I'll look.
We attempted to keep the same look because right now, it has a brick look to it, and that's what will continue with that.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't have any, that would be color, I don't believe, but I will look.
Well, you're looking up, you're not clearing any additional vegetation. So, the trees, the vegetation that's there that currently provides some aesthetic shielding from Freiberg and from Connector Road would remain in place?
There will be some clearing down in this part of the site, but nothing along, there's not a whole lot of vegetation on Freiberg.
Okay.
Certainly, I don't believe you'd be able to see the building from Connector.
Okay.
Due to the slope. And there's, this hillside continues several hundred feet down to the road. And it's probably 100-plus feet, the site's probably 100-plus feet higher than Connector. Freiberg, there's only a nominal amount of landscaping. This is actually a large drainage swale, so that's actually down from the road. So this building will be clearly visible from Freiberg. And for this, I don't know how the color is. This just kind of gives you the scale of the building. This, we're looking at it as if you were standing in the parking lot, so there's a loading area. But to John's point, there's multiple textures. They're trying to break up the mass of the building. There's not much in the way of windows, because this is essentially, it's similar to a data center-type building where it's pretty much all, you know, just computers and cooling and power, so that it continues to operate.
Just one last question. I think you mentioned it, but I didn't quite get it. On your other diagram there, you had a green space. Is that, yeah, that green area, is that lawn?
Yeah, I made that as green as I can make it. That's essentially this paved area has become green. So that's an area that there will be lawn and some, there's also some condensing units and some other. There's quite a few utilities that run into there, so there's not a lot of room to plant trees or, there could be some shrubs out in that area, certainly. But the intent is not to take any of these trees down that you see on this part of the slope.
I would just ask if there's an opportunity anywhere in that area to increase the tree vegetation as much as possible. But yeah, I understand the underlines. I've worked in data centers, so I understand what you guys are up against, so.
Yeah, it's a spaghetti bowl under there.
Yeah, exactly. I get it, yeah.
Shelby, any questions?
No.
Sean?
I think it looks pretty straightforward. I mean, it sounds like minimal impact to the, in terms of the rest of the town. You know, there's no traffic impact, you know. So, yeah, I feel I'm comfortable with what's going on here, and I'm sure the planning board will have all the important questions to ask you, so.
We hope they're just like yours. We have met with fire and engineering and Jim and Fred Leonardo, the building commissioner, at least twice during this process. This started about a year ago when they made the decision to build and then choose whether it was an addition or a new site or a freestanding building, so. We've had those meetings. They've been productive.
Mr. Robbins?
Tim Robbins, town planner. Just to add a couple supportive statements for this project. Mike and the applicant have worked very closely with the town staff. They've met with us several times. To your concern about the elevation and visibility of this new building, it's actually lower than the existing building. It will not be visible from Connector Road because the site is elevated. You won't be able to see it. It will be visible from Freiberg Parkway, but the green space, as Mike has said, is actually increasing with this design. The police and fire department have looked at access issues. The engineering department's looked at grading and drainage issues. And the public hearing with the planning board is September 7th. I expect it to be positively received.
Thank you very much. Anything else from this board? So the only comment that might be a request from the select board to the planning board would be to, where possible, expand the planting vegetation or trees, preferably.
Understood.
And so we can draft a memo for the planning board.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you coming this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, request to approve a new all-alcohol license to Rishi's LLC DBA Thai Manal, Thai and Asian Cuisine at 22 South Street.
It's an advertised public hearing, so you have to wait till 6:30?
Oh, it was at 6:25 on the agenda. I thought I was right on time.
I'm sorry. Let me just check the advertisement.
One second.
Okay, it's advertised 6:30, so if we could wait five minutes and do something else.
Okay, so I apologize, we need to wait till 6:30, as it's an advertised public hearing. So I will move to the next item on the agenda, which is discussion vote on executing the LIP regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for ownership project for Village Commons LLC.
Great. So this is for the board to approve and execute the regulatory agreement. The Village Commons will have three affordable housing units and must complete the regulatory agreement signed by DHCD and the select board and the project sponsor. So we did provide this to Town Council, and they provide, she provided her edits. So you did receive her redline version in your packet. Cela actually updated that today. DHCD has approved as to form, our form that Town Council provided. So, and Jim Robbins has been working with the developer on this, and they've also approved it. So assuming that the board approves it this evening, we can move forward with signing it by all parties.
Any questions?
Just remind me again of where exactly this is. Sorry, I should ask this before the meeting.
Thank you, that's all right. Happy to answer the selectman's question. So Village Commons is at 1 Gleason Street. So if you're at the intersection of Smithville Parkway and Gleason Street, it's literally right in the apex in the corner.
Perfect, thank you.
And just to corroborate what the town manager said, I've spoken with the developer, and he's happy to have you sign it.
Alan, if I may?
Yes, you. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So just, this, for you, Alan, this is a question to Jim Robbins. The document says the address is 6 Edgewood Road. I do know where the property is, being that it's that Gleason location. But I want to make sure that that is actually the address of the property.
That's the address of the developer.
That's the developer's corporate address.
Right.
Ah, okay. And is, you know, because that was my same question, I thought I knew where this was. And yet there's no reference to an address in the document, at least that I could find. Is that unusual?
I don't have the document in front of me, but it should be on the first page as 1 Gleason Street.
And I just ask kind of my question, because if I look at, it says it's Village Commons at a 4.295 acre site on Fisher Road in the municipality.
The Fisher Street comes in there too. The technical address on the assessor's map is 1 Gleason Street, but Fisher Road is, it's right at the corner of Fisher and Gleason.
Right. So I'd be comfortable if that address was in there, because if someone at some point wants to change the name of Village Commons, then the street name wouldn't change. And if that matches the assessor map.
It references an exhibit, so I think we just want to make sure that it's consistent with the exhibit. I was looking for the exhibit.
It's actually, I actually looked up the deed filing. It's at the intersection of Fisher and Gleason Street. And there is a street, Donia Drive, that goes into the subdivision.
That'll be the new street once the project is finished, correct?
So some of the documents reference addresses on Donia Drive as to specific units within the development.
Yes, correct.
And I'm supportive of assigning this.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, one second.
Sorry.
How many units are in this development?
15.
15, so 20% of the development will be, okay. Has this group done other developments within Westboro previously?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole question.
As the same group that's running this project on other projects within Westboro previously?
They did an affordable project called Zara Gardens, which is off of East Main Street, Route 30.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I'll move to execute the local initiative program regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for ownership project for Village Commons LLC.
I'll second that.
So John Steinberg is watching, as he always does. And he just said that the address on Gleason will no longer exist. So as long as everyone's comfortable, we just move forward with the document as presented.
Which is Fisher Road?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Shelby?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, I didn't understand what Christie was saying.
So, so because the subdivision has a roadway, the units in the subdivision will be addressed on that new road. And the address 1 Fisher Street will, or 1 Gleason Street will actually no longer exist. Because the units themselves will be based off of Darnia Road. So if we're comfortable with the description of the property, which is pretty typical form for, particularly for LIP applications, then we would move forward.
So sorry to be a little bit of a stickler about this, but it seems odd to me that the address that it's going to be at is not referenced. And I was looking at the exhibits, and it does, it is specific as to location in the exhibits. But again, there's, there's no
And that's typical?
There's no address.
That's typical for this type of document. And that the location in the exhibits is referring to the deed as filed in the South Wester County Register of Deeds. And so it matches, I actually looked it up yesterday. It matches the deed filing, I think from 2015.
Yes, again, if you indulge me, the regulatory agreement is tied to an approval that was given by the planning board. The planning board gave the approval for Village Commons at 1 Gleason Street. So if you were looking for this agreement, you'd first find the planning board's special permit, which specifically identifies the project as 1 Gleason Street. The reason for that is, at the time of the approval, the streets had not yet been named. So you won't see Donia Drive anywhere on the approved plans. That's why it's referenced in what will shortly be the former address. But legally, if you were searching the name of this project, if you were a homeowner, you would look up Village Commons, and the site would be 1 Gleason Street, and the regulatory agreement would be tied to that decision. And that's typical for all subdivisions as well.
Does that answer your question, Shelby? Okay, great. Seeing no further comment or discussion, move to a vote. All in favor? Shelby, I think we have to get it verbally from you.
Marshall, yes.
Okay, so it passes on a vote of 5-0-0, 5 being present. Thank you. Okay, so the time now being 6:34 PM. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing, request to approve a new all-alcohol license.
I'll move to open the public hearing through requests, on the request to approve a new all-alcohol license to Rishi's LLC, doing business as Thai Manal Thai and Asian Cuisine at 22 South Street.
Second.
So moved and seconded, roll call vote, because it's public hearing, or show of hands?
So open the public hearing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed what you
Do I need a roll call vote for open the public hearing?
No, but Shelby can.
Okay, so I'll start with Shelby.
Marshall, yes.
All in favor, the public hearing is now open. Thank you. Please come forward, introduce yourself.
Hi there, my name is Paul Tran. I'm the owner of the Thai Manal Thai Restaurant. I'm here to request for approval of the new liquor license for our Thai Manal Restaurant, locating at 22 South Street in Westboro.
Okay. We have quite a bit of information related in the packet. As far as the regulatory process and the licensing process, as well as the required education and training for having an all-alcohol license. So I will open up this up first to the board for any questions or comments. Ian?
I just have a comment, supportive of this, but as I said, everyone that comes through for a liquor license is that we as a board and as a town take this very seriously. And I know that part of this, as select board member Edinburgh said, has the licenses and those requirements and trainings. But it is something we take very seriously, so please make sure to observe all rules and laws related to serving, most notably serving minors, but also over-serving, et cetera. We fully support this happening, but we also don't want to see you back in front of us for a hearing for a liquor law violation. So just kind of reminder, I always give of, I think I give it every time to the board. But not at all to scare you, but just as a reminder. But we definitely are supportive, happy that you're here in town, and look forward to you with helping out your business with granting this. So I'm fully supportive of it, and that's all I have.
Patrick?
Yeah, I guess I just have one point to make. First of all, thank you very much for operating a food establishment in our town. It's great to have you here. The only thing I noticed was in the packet, I noticed, great to have two TIP certified individuals for this establishment. I noticed, Mr. Tran, I think it was your, your application didn't have an expiration date on your license. So I just might want to update that in the process here, if that's appropriate. So just a comment.
At the time I submitted the document, my, the TIP license hasn't come yet, but now it's, it's in, I have it. I'll submit the paperwork to you guys, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shelby?
I've heard great things about the restaurant and fully support this. Thank you.
No, I'm in agreement as well. Thank you very much. Welcome to town and look forward to stopping by.
Okay, I have looked over the materials and don't have any questions. I guess my one comment was also to, so I'm glad to see that there's an opportunity for you to expand the business. I find you incredibly brave that you opened a new restaurant in the middle of the pandemic at a time when the best you could do was takeout and curbside service. And so we appreciate you taking that risk and building a business and locating it here in Westboro. And wish you the best of luck moving forward. No further discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, with the public hearing, do you just want to see if anybody's in public?
I almost forgot. This is a public hearing. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, by show of hands?
Didn't see anybody.
Okay, seeing none, we'll now entertain a motion, but thank you for the procedural reminder.
I'll have to get back there. Sure, I will move to approve the all-alcohol license to, and hopefully I get this right, Rishi's?
Rishi's, yeah.
Rishi's LLC, doing business as Thai Manal Thai and Asian Cuisine, naming Paul Tran as the manager of record.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no additional comment or questions, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Marshall, yes.
5, so passes by a vote of 5-0-0, 5 being present. And Ian, if you can move to close the public hearing?
Sure, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second that?
Moved and seconded. Any questions or objections? Seeing here none, show of hands, 4?
Marshall, yes.
Marshall, yes. By a vote of 5-0, 5 being present, the public hearing's closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Next on the agenda is a discussion vote, request to approve a special liquor license for the Doubletree Hotel for Viva East event. And I will turn the floor over to Christie on this one.
Okay, so typically, so this is a request for a one-day or special license, liquor license. In 2016, the board took a vote that authorized the town manager to be the deputy local licensing authority. So typically, these don't come before you. There are things that I can handle during the regular workday. The reason that we're bringing it before you is because this is sort of a unique and larger event, and we wanted to raise awareness, and we wanted the board to be aware of it. And so the Doubletree Hotel is planning to host Viva East, which is an event that includes many different activities inside the hotel and then also outside the hotel with the car show. And so the board was provided with information. I know that the applicants are here and can give you more information about the event. But this is just coming before you again as awareness. This is anticipated to be an annual event. And so really, your motion here is to support my approval of the license, assuming that you do have that support, so.
Thank you. Please come forward, introduce yourself, and if you'd like to present a little bit about the event, that would be great.
My name is Scott Smith. I'm the general manager at the Doubletree Hotel, 5400 Computer Drive. I'm the one who applied for the one-day license. So the event is Viva East. It's a subculture event, basically rockabilly, 1970 pre-custom cars, swing dancing, things like that. It's an event that's been held for almost a decade now, I think at the Foxborough Regency. And they moved to our venue, looking for a bigger hotel, more rooms. So the one-day application is for October 2nd, which is a Saturday specifically. It's a three-day event, you'll notice that, but it's, we're only need the one-day liquor license for the outdoor parking lot venue for the car show itself on Saturday, October 2nd. Seeking the one-day application, the fence Seeking the one day application, the fenced in area, I believe a site map was kind of supplied to you with the liquor application, but they'll be approximately taking up fencing in about 220 spaces of our 400 and approximately 440 space parking lot. All alcohol will be controlled within that fenced in area by my staff, their staff as well, but we'll be policing the gate, making sure no alcohol is leaving the fenced in area with my staff and nobody from my inside. Liquor license will be coming into the fenced in area. So we'll have people outside the hotel and inside the hotel watching entrances, exits as well in this event.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Patrick?
Yeah, first of all, I'm excited about this event. I love rockabilly and old cars. So thank you for bringing us to the town and looking forward to it. I guess my only question is, is the license only for beer and wine? Is that how?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we'll only be doing beer and wine, no, no alcohol or hard alcohol services. So, yeah.
True. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Shelby, any questions?
No.
Sean?
No questions really. I'd just like to say thank you for the support you've provided the town over this past year and a half. I know it's been a troubling time for everybody and the Doubletree has really stepped up and, and helped the town in terms of hosting, you know, vaccination clinic and things like that. And we really appreciate you and look forward to this event.
Happy we can do it and reopen, so.
We are too.
Thank you. That's a great point.
Any comments or questions? If none, I'm happy to entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to support the town manager signing the special license for the Doubletree Hotel for the purposes of Viva East event on October 2nd, 2021, in accordance with the requirements specified by the ABCC.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor. And Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
So passes by a vote of five to zero, five being present. Thank you very much and good luck. And it looks like it's going to be a big fun, big and fun event.
Thank you. I'd love to see you there.
Great, thanks.
Okay. And we're actually a little bit ahead of time, but I see our advocate for our 7:00 PM item is here. So next on the agenda is a discussion vote, support for the HERO bill. Senator Eldridge, welcome to our select board meeting.
Great, thank you so much. Great to be here. Great to see everyone. And thanks so much for having me. And I want to thank the chair for reaching out to invite me to speak to the select board tonight. So State Senator Jamie Eldridge and I'm the Senate sponsor of a bill known as the HERO bill, Housing and Revenue Options. The formal number and name of the bill is Senate 1853, an act providing for climate change, adaptation, infrastructure, and affordable housing investments in the Commonwealth. And I would just first of all state that, you know, I really appreciate the leadership of the select board and the, and the town of Westboro, including its, its town employees for, for being much more forward looking than, than perhaps other communities on not only affordable housing, but on, on climate change. So the town is already sort of taking actions to, to address these, these challenges. And, and really what this bill is, is a, is a piece to best support cities and towns. I know that Westboro has gone to great strides to, to build more affordable housing in town, including a diversity of affordable housing. And it's also taken steps not only to protect open space, but to do its part to combat climate change. And I think at the end of the day, I have recognized, I think a lot of legislators have recognized that the state is not providing enough support for you. And that can include, you know, helping communities like Westboro build affordable housing on your own terms. And often that, that challenge is, is getting funding, is getting the money, whether for subsidies or money for development. As well as on the climate resiliency front is just, you know, more funding to address flooding, to, you know, work on possible solar projects to make your, your community more climate resilient. And so what a coalition of affordable housing and climate change groups, which in some ways is a candidate movement about 20 years ago for the Community Preservation Act, which has been very, very successful, is they, they came together and looked to identify a new revenue source. I think there's a recognition at the end of the day, if we're really serious about affordable housing, if we're really serious about climate resiliency and climate change, the state needs to provide a dedicated revenue source for, for cities and towns. And so what this bill proposes to do, it's, it's actually a very short bill, is it would double the deeds excise fee, which is paid whenever you purchase a home. Right now, and I have a, a chart here just listing the, the cost. So it's, it's $4.56 per $1,000 of assessed value of a home. And so for example, right now, a home that, that sold for $600,000, fairly typical in Westboro, although I know it's moving up, is $2,736. And what we're proposing in this bill is to double the deeds excise fee. So that would be $912 per $1,000. So for that $600,000 theoretical house that new fee that would be paid for is $5,000 and $472. So at least in my opinion, a modest increase considering, you know, what you're, what you're purchasing. And that would raise about $300 million per year. So dedicated revenue every year. $150 million of that would go to the global warming solutions trust fund for climate resiliency. So to be given out to grants to towns and cities. And then $150 million of that would go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So these are funds that are already established under the, the governor's office. You know, there are various grants given out by those funds, including for example, the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant, the MVP, which I, I think that Westboro has received. But at the end of the day, it's really not that much funding. And so the idea is to create a dedicated revenue source that would provide this money year after year that towns like Westboro could, could apply for. And so that is what the, the bill would do. You know, I recently presented to the acting select board and, you know, appreciate the select board there endorsing the bill. I'm, you know, presenting to, before the MMA, to their legislative subcommittee and their environment and climate change subcommittee. You know, there's been no action by the MMA, but I think it's fair to say there's been a fair amount of interest from municipal officials. And again, there is a coalition of affordable housing groups, climate change and environmental groups that have endorsed the bill and are advocating for it. This is the first time the bill's been filed, but it was something that began talking about with colleagues and activists and municipal officials last session. So, so that's what the bill does. I think it's, you know, fairly straightforward and happy to answer any questions and appreciate any consideration by the board. I do think at the end of the day, the only way a bill like this passes, similar to the Community Preservation Act in, I think, 2002, is, is getting municipal officials and municipal leaders to advocate for the bill. So thanks very much for your time and happy to answer any questions.
We'll open it up to questions. Shelby, you're the farthest away. I'll have you go first, though.
Oh, that's unfair. Thank you, Senator Eldridge, for coming before our board and providing the overview for us and the public who may be watching. The information that we were providing in our packet talks fairly extensively about emergency relief funding that this bill would primarily target as a result of the pandemic. I'm, I'm struggling a little bit between this fee and the $2.5 billion that the state has received to address COVID-related emergency needs.
Absolutely, yeah. The, the state, of course, has received billions of dollars from the CARES Act and now the American Rescue Plan. And, and, you know, just to note on the infrastructure note, you know, we have about $5 billion to spend. But I would just, you know, point out that our, our budget every year is, is $42 billion. And, you know, the monies that you mentioned, I believe have to be spent by 2024. And so at the end of the day, you know, similar, again, not to keep going back to the Community Preservation Act, but at the end of the day, in my opinion, you know, having, having a dedicated revenue source that towns and cities can apply for, you know, every year is, is really what you need if, if, you know, the town of Westboro moves forward with an affordable housing project and needs, you know, a subsidy of $10 million or $20 million, or if you have a climate resilient project for that same amount of money. As much as I'd, you know, like to think that the current extra federal dollars we have will reach Westboro, you know, I'm quite honestly not sure. And certainly, you know, after 2024, you know, that money will have to be spent. And so this is a long-term vision to provide more support for cities and towns for affordable housing and climate resiliency. So I don't know if that fully answers your question, but.
No, no, it, it starts to. So thank you. I, I think just to the board, my, my concern is we're going from, I recognize that the fees have not been raised in many years. I don't have the date right in front of me.
1989.
Yeah, so 100% increase. You know, I'm not sure where that came from. It seems a bit arbitrary. I'm also concerned that the bill itself doesn't address the mechanisms through which determination of fees would be allocated back to municipalities. So I'm certainly familiar with this in my work on the Community Preservation Exploratory Committee here in Westboro, as we try to bring that forward. So I'm familiar with how that works, but this bill doesn't, or at least doesn't share with me how those monies would be allocated back to Westboro. And so that certainly is my concern in supporting that at this point.
Sure. And I would just say, and I want to be, you know, upfront, is it's different from the CPA in that, you know, towns aren't opting into it. So it's, it's a statewide fee and towns and cities would have to apply. So it's not, you know, guaranteed that Westboro would get funding. In terms of the, the, the double figure, I think it was two things. First of all, it hasn't been updated since 1989. So, you know, talking 30 years it hasn't been updated. And you think about, you know, how much, the, the price of a house has gone up. And, you know, to get a $300 million dedicated revenue source, you know, I think would, would finally raise the money to really make a real impact in a lot of communities. And, and I would argue that a town like Westboro would be in a particularly good position to get funding because it already does so much planning and so much work for affordable housing, you know, for climate resiliency, and yet, you know, doesn't always have access to the state subsidies or money that it needs to, you know, do a, a sort of comprehensive project. So that would be my response.
So to clarify, this would, the dispersment of these funds would go through the existing processes of the two funds where the money's going?
Exactly.
So a follow-on project to our municipal vulnerability planning grant would go through that existing process and be able to tap these funds. When we're doing an affordable housing project, we would go to the state Affordable Housing Trust Fund and apply for grants that way.
Exactly. And I, and I, you know, have heard some feedback that it, it's too general. And I think the, the balance always is that if you make it, you know, too specific, you make it harder for towns to apply for money or perhaps restrict some communities from getting the funding. So that's why it's fairly general, but, you know, certainly willing to add more details and more specifics in terms of, you know, how a town or city could apply for this money or making sure that communities that, you know, represent a broad spectrum of different kinds of communities get, get access to the funding.
Anything else, Shelby?
Nope.
I'll look left first this time. Sean?
Now, Senator Eldridge, thank you very much. Yeah, it was interesting to me, some of the, some of the background information that was provided, looking at, you know, other neighboring states and what their rates were and the fact that, you know, there does seem to be an opportunity here to, to lift this fee in order to, to fund, you know, some sorts of projects. I think that makes some sense. And I probably need to do an, you know, an additional amount of homework on some of these mechanisms individually. But I think generally, I think, you know, what you're talking about here, I believe does make some sense. And then there is going to have to be a, a significant amount of money raised for both funding climate change initiatives and for affordable housing. So you are definitely trying to address, yeah, I think two of our more significant needs in this state. So I, I myself probably still need to do a little more research on this, but I commend you for, for trying to make a, you know, really take a swing at it and see kind of what we can do about this. So thank you very much. At this point, I don't know that, that I have any questions for you.
And I just want to say, you know, thank you. This is, we're very much in the early stages and, you know, appreciate the need to do due diligence on, on the bill, but happy to be a resource after the meeting for any questions people have.
Thank you.
Patrick or Ian? Patrick?
No, I'll just say I thank Senator Eldridge for coming and presenting to us. When I first saw this information, I was a little concerned. One of the things that I ran on for office was, you know, the fact that equitability in regards to the cost of living in Westboro. And, you know, certainly going from $2,000 plus dollars to $5,000 when a homeowner is purchasing a house is, is a lot of additional money, especially for, you know, first time home buyers. So it's not something that I take lightly. I'd love to see more younger people be able to move and afford it, to move into Westboro. I, I do support this. And the reason why I support it is because it, it, it does, as Sean just said, address two pressing issues in, in our town and in our state. And specifically the affordable housing issue. So that's, that's what swung me. And again, I appreciate you, your work on this and bringing this forward to us. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think similar, I guess, concerns coming in there. One is just timing of where we're standing in terms of the pandemic. And it's something, just to be honest, we go through community preservation. It's a concern of mine right now of putting more of a burden on folks that, as we know, where we have folks that we're trying to help out in town, make ends meet and make rent and, and pay mortgages, et cetera. And as select board member Wells said too, I think, you know, that number was, you know, a little bit startling of putting that increase on folks looking to buy and potentially first time home buyers. So I understand what's coming from. I do understand, and we as a town have really supported and moved forward with affordable housing and climate solutions. But personally from right now, I just don't know that it's the right time. And the doubling, as was said by other members, concerns me quite a bit because it's really kind of a shock. And I understand why you're doing it, to get enough money in there, but it, but it also is concerning. I guess the final concern is really, again, nothing new. So part of going towards the end is, is my fellow board members have said a lot, but, you know, there's no guarantees here for Westboro. I think you've said, you know, and you can't guarantee that. I'm not looking for you to guarantee that, that it's, you know, we're probably in a good position in your view of applying for that because of what we've done. But again, it's, it's not a guarantee that that money comes to us as a town. So interested to hear more, you know, maybe supportive and more retired structure going forward as opposed to a full piece, but, but definitely concerns with that significant piece. And the second concern is really, is the timing appropriate where we stand today. So, but thank you.
Absolutely.
So actually, it leads to my first question, which is, as originally filed, the effective date was January 1st, 2021, which is a bit in the rearview mirror. Is this, if it was enacted during the current or the upcoming legislative session, would it be a January 1, 2022, 2023, or 2024 start?
Yeah, I would say realistically, earliest would be January 2023 and probably later. Yeah, usually, especially around anything around revenue, it's usually not, doesn't take, not implemented, not effective till the following session. So.
Okay. And I do notice that even with the increase, the excise fee rates would be still less than Connecticut, Vermont, New York, and New Hampshire. I don't see Rhode Island listed, so I assume they, they would be a little lower than that. So I don't think it would, at a macro level, I don't think it would put the state at a disadvantage as far as home sales or, or property valuations or transactions. So.
And I would just say in my conversation with realtors, I mean, And I would just say, in my conversation with realtors, I mean, pretty much, they would be informing the prospective homeowner about what this new fee is, and that would be just part of the mortgage. So it's usually covered through the mortgage as far as that increased fee, which is one time.
Okay. So any additional questions? And yes?
Sorry, Senator, just one additional one is, and this is, again, probably my ignorance and not know how this works, but with the way this is worded, is it, if passed, is it guaranteed that those funds will go to those two trust funds that I talked about? Or is there the ability for the House and Senate, governor, whatever, to divert those to other priorities?
No, no, yeah. So as worded, and that's why we made sure to word it is, how much of the money goes into each fund? So it would go only to those two funds, yep, which is very important.
Alan, do I have one? Sure. So let me think, Ian. Is there, knowing that there's no, again, guarantee that Westboro will see anything, towns that opt into this or support it, let's say, through this process, do we, I mean, are we in a list of towns that get priority? You know, because if we're opting in.
Certainly my call to whatever secretary of, whatever governors at that time.
All right.
Yep. That's all I can promise.
All right, thank you.
I admire that question.
There is a House.
Yes.
Bill on as well. I'm wondering if you're aware of the view on this legislation from our three delegates in the House?
Yeah, I don't actually know. Yeah, I'm not sure. It's a very new bill, so I'm not sure if they're cosponsors, but I'll reach out to them. Yep.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, we've got a couple of options. We can entertain a motion and take action now, or, Sean, you were looking, potentially do some additional research, and Shelby mentioned that as well, or we can.
Well, I liked your last question there, Alan. I just wondered if we should ask what the positions of our three state representatives are before we as a board.
Okay. I was gonna say, I'm happy to defer action to a future meeting. Give us time to do a little bit more research. Certainly, Senator Eldredge, I expect you'll be more than happy to receive and entertain and answer questions that we might have along the process, as you mentioned, early in the process for this legislation.
Yeah, and the bill is still in committee and has not yet been heard, the Revenue Committee. It hasn't been heard the bill yet, so I assume that'll happen this fall.
And I guess I should have pointed out during the introduction that this did come about because the Select Board did receive a request from a resident for us to consider supporting this act, which spurred my reaching out to Senator Eldredge as the author and primary sponsor to come and make the presentation and discuss with us here today. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I like the hybrid setup you put together.
We continue to adapt.
Yes. We're working hard at it.
Shelby from up above.
Yeah. She's all over the place.
That's right.
I got a few spots.
That's right.
We're looking right at us.
I actually am north, I'm in Maine, so it's appropriate down above.
You're in my favorite space.
Mine too. All right, well, thanks again. Great to see everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Okay, so our next agenda item is actually scheduled to, until 7:20, which is a joint meeting with the Board of Health regarding COVID-19. I'm not sure if they're ready to convene yet, so we can.
Let's move to the other ones.
Move to the other one.
Just because I think we advertise to people watching.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely. So, but I think there's two items we might be able to get through in the 15 minutes we have. So it would be discussion vote on the submission of an opinion editorial to Commonwealth Magazine. If we pull that up, I did email out a draft of what I wrote to the board for review. And what's interesting is, over the weekend, while I was finishing the draft, and I apologize for getting it out so late, I was wondering, has enough time passed? The public comment period for Mass DPH's determination of need has passed. Part of the discussion was a third-party review of some of the aspects of the request and the financial impact it might have on neighboring institutions, which is something we as a board are sensitive to. And so I was wondering, is this something that, you know, time has passed and not worthwhile? Today, I was made aware that there's an editorial, a letter to the editor in the Worcester Telegram Gazette, chastising this board for having supported the project in the way we did without doing enough research. And again, that letter to the editor by a Westboro resident, who is also an employee and an executive with UMass Memorial and the Medical School, repeated some of the misperceptions about the project and about Westboro as a community. Most notably, the focus of that letter to the editor was solely on the outpatient surgical and diagnostic services. It did not mention the fact that it is providing additional primary care and behavioral mental health resources to our community. And it again pointed out that, claiming that the project is effectively only there to serve wealthy people, thereby not accurately reflecting the diverse socioeconomic nature of Westboro as a town and as a community. And also mentioned that there's no access to public transportation, which of course, with our WRTA via service, evidently we have some more marketing to do, means that the vast majority of Westboro and over half of Shrewsbury would be able to access this facility using the Via Shared Ride Service for $2 or less per ride in each direction. And so you have a copy of the letter. I guess the question is, is the board comfortable with me providing this as an op-ed piece? And are there any changes that you would like to see in what's been drafted? Ian, you look like you're ready to speak.
Yeah, I thought it was very well-written, so thank you for doing that. I thought it was addressed, as you just said, kind of some misperceptions and some accusations that have come to this board. So I'm supportive. I guess the question I have is, so as I read it, I was just trying to pull up here, but just, is it coming from you as chair of the board? Is it coming from us as a board? A little bit piece was kind of boring, then it was you, and I just don't know how, and I think I'm fine either way, just to be clear as to what it is. And saying that, I'm supportive of it because I'm supportive of this project, and I think that we have done our diligence. It is something that, again, as we've talked in public meetings, or I've talked in public meetings, that have gotten a lot of comments from residents, with the majority of them being positive about this facility and what it can provide to the residents of Westboro. And I thought you were fair and balanced in what you did and addressed the misperceptions that are out there.
I'm comfortable submitting it individually as one of five, or submitting it on behalf of the Select Board, whichever this board is comfortable with. If the board isn't comfortable having me submit on behalf of the Select Board, that's fine. I would still look for concurrence that I should do so individually because I think it's important to get the information out and the perspective. And even though the public comment period is, for the determination of need has passed, this really isn't about influencing the determination of need, right? There's formulas, there's some financial analysis happening, Mass DPH, I trust, has that well in hand, that's what they do. This is really about making sure the understanding of the project and its place in our community, the benefits it could bring to the community, and the representation of Westboro as a town and as a community is accurate, as people discuss and form their opinions about the project. Patrick? You look like you're about to say something. It's hard to tell.
I know.
Sean?
No, I'm comfortable with submitting this. Well done. And I think you've made, and I don't want to say arguments, you have cleared up misperceptions that have been placed out there by other articles that have been written, and I appreciate you doing that. And I'm very comfortable, I think, with certainly either supporting this with a measure here or having you provide it, you know, from all of us collectively. You know, I think, you know, what you've done here is you've stated the facts about our town clearly and about this project and how we viewed the project, and that it's really not, we do not make a determination of need within the Select Board. There is a body that is much better versed to do that than we are, and they're taking their time and they're going to make that decision one way or another. I think for us, it's more what we feel it can do for the community in multiple other ways, and we have to look at all of those. So I am very confident with what you've put out here. Thank you very much.
Shelby, you had sent me an email with a typographical error, which I will correct, punctuation. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I think, Alan, in my email to you, I had included just the reference to the census data that has recently been published, our 495 Metro West Partnership shared this information, and I think it's of interest to note the change in demographics of our community since the last census. So I encourage the board to look at that document. If you don't have it, I'm happy to share it. But there has been a significant change in the Caucasian demographic decreasing by 10% in Westboro and others increasing, and that is reflective, Alan, of what you've written, but you may want to reference that data.
Okay. I can certainly do that.
But I'm supportive of it for the reasons that we discussed at our prior meeting, and I missed it because my audio cut out. Where did you say the editorial was that was critical of the board?
The Telegram Gazette.
Okay, thanks.
I believe a couple of people have posted it on some of the Westboro Facebook groups as well.
Well, see, when you're trying to get away from it all, you try to stay away from social media too.
It's hard.
Alan, I just, if I could, might add, I guess I really shouldn't have said I didn't have a comment. I do want to appreciate your work writing the letter. I think it's important for all the reasons that have already been stated, and I do want to thank you for your work on creating that letter, and I would be supportive of pushing that forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I think just back to my question.
Shelby?
Sorry, Ian, I was just gonna go back to your point. I mean, I would be supportive of this being written by you on behalf for the board as a whole.
Yeah. As a chair, but it sounds like there's full support from the board here, so however you want to word that, but, you know, coming from you as chair, but I think that would, personally, I think, hearing a fellow board members, I mean, coming across that this is supportive by us as a board, it's not just you as chair, however you want to get that in there, I think is.
Okay, thank you.
Favorable.
Okay, so I will entertain the motion.
So moved.
Okay, here we go. I move to authorize.
So I move, I move to authorize.
Oh.
Go.
Go, Shelby.
Go, Shelby. I already did one.
Motion from afar.
Okay, motioning to approve the chair to draft an opinion piece on behalf of the entire board to be submitted to Commonwealth Magazine and other media outlets in support of the Mass General Brigham Westboro Project.
Second bet.
Seeing no hands for further discussion or question, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor? And Shelby?
Marshall, yes?
It is a vote of 500, five being present. Thank you very much. I will wrap that up and we will get that submitted. We have four minutes before we start our joint meeting with the Board of Health, and we have a quick item on the agenda, which is a discussion vote on appointment of an MBTA Advisory Board designee. Kristi, can you make the introduction to this?
Yep, so the town, each town has two representatives on the MBTA Advisory Board, and this membership can be made up of a planning board member or their designee, a member of the Select Board or their designee, or the town manager or their designee. So Jim Robbins has been serving as a planning board's designee for several years. He also sits on a subcommittee for the Worcester to Boston commuter rail, and the meetings are quarterly. Selectman Hashmi was the board, Select Board's previous designee to the MBTA Advisory Board. You could have Jim Robbins be your designee, or you could, as Select Board, appoint someone else to be your designee on the MBTA Advisory Board.
Okay, so I guess my first.
Question on?
Yes, go ahead, Shelby.
Yeah, so what, how frequently do they meet? What's the time commitment? I see reference to some subcommittees as well.
So the MBTA Advisory Board meets quarterly. The subcommittee that Jim is a part of meets more often.
And in Boston, typically pre?
Yeah, I think, I'm assuming they haven't gone back to meeting in Boston yet, but.
How long is the appointment for?
I don't, when Hashmi was appointed, I don't think there was a term. It's, until you're no longer serving on the Select Board or you choose to not serve on this committee.
We can make that person the designee. Personally, I'm fine either way. I don't want myself to be the designee, so I'm not volunteering for it, but if there is a board member or if there's someone else that'd like to designate, I'm fully supportive of that. I'm also, if not, I'm fully supportive of Jim Robbins being our designee as well, but likewise.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So I'll get to Shelby in a second. I'm comfortable having, since Jim Robbins, our town planner, is willing to serve in this capacity, I'm willing to have him take that appointment. He's already operating on a subcommittee to this committee. At the same time, he is involved in other area partnerships and particularly work with the WRTA, the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, and Westboro is in this unique situation, right? We've got, we're in the overlap of two different transit authorities, right, that provide two different types of services that meet different types of needs to our community. And yet, there needs to be some level of coordination there. And I'm thinking that if he were to serve in this function, it would help cross-pollinate. And Kristi, you have a comment to that?
No, I was just thinking that if none of the members of the board are interested, I could, we could talk to some of the other department heads to see if they might be an appropriate designee. Specifically, I'm thinking other employees in the Community Development Department.
Okay.
So maybe there could be coordination there.
Okay. That sounds reasonable.
Shelby had something.
Shelby?
So this is extremely interesting to me, but as my plate already runneth over, it's, wouldn't be fair for me to raise my hand. So Kristi, I like your idea. I was sort of thinking along the same lines, so thank you for suggesting it. And I guess I would just ask that perhaps this come back to the board in a year or whatever that cycle is for appointees, for the board to be reconsidered as one of the designees, or, you know, at least to make sure we're always engaging this board as possible participants.
Yeah, I would just add to that, yes. It sounds like table to maybe like our next meeting to check with department heads to see about an appointment officially from us, so we'll put that, if we can put that, whenever the chair decides is appropriate time, but to the next, a following meeting. And I agree with the second point that Shelby brought up of bringing that in, and I guess the third point I'd have is something, you know, I recall that we were doing with our members, is that whoever that designee is at some frequency, just to have an update, if it's not one of us, that designee to report to the board whenever is appropriate. I would ask for that.
We can add it to our list, our liaison and board representation list, so that when you. you are ready to do that, we can revisit it.
Right, thank you. Okay, with that action and direction moving forward, next item on the agenda is our joint meeting with the Board of Health. So I'll invite the Board of Health to join us here. We've got three seats there, we've got a fourth here, and I believe there's going to be an introduction.
Yes.
Of our new health director.
You can pass it out, thanks. Can Jen sit up there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
You can sit there.
You can sit there.
Just don't play on the computer.
You'll send Shelby off into vacation land.
Yeah, I can put it that, thank you. So you have a new face at the table, our new public health director who started yesterday, Jennifer Sullivan from Webster. She was the health agent in Webster, so she's very familiar with obviously the impacts of COVID and how Massachusetts is working to deal with that, as well as all other things public health related, which we don't get to talk a lot about lately. So I don't know, Nathan or Jen, if you want to add anything?
I'd work with all of you, for sure.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, welcome.
I know Ray was counting, he had a big calendar in his office, counting down the days.
So maybe if you'd like to call.
We'd like to open up our meeting. And being 7:20, I want to thank the Select Board for having us here as part of this. I think it's important, especially as we roll toward kind of opening of schools and dealing with this kind of fall phase where there could be upticks in coronavirus, that the Board of Health be included in some of these meetings and that we meet a little bit more regularly than our traditional focus. So that, I mean, I have a couple of things I'd like to go over, just kind of to bring us up to date on numbers and things like that. But I think that Ray has provided a sheet that has tabulated some stuff. And I think, Alan, you were the one who pulled together some notes on that. So I don't know if you want to read those first, and then we can come back.
So I haven't, I've just seen these numbers today, but I haven't had a chance to talk to Ray. And so there certainly has been an uptick in COVID cases in Westboro in the month of August compared to the month of July. So in the month of July, I think we had a total of 14 cases. We've had 33 cases so far. And in conversations with Ray, there are more expected even in the remaining week of the month. So this represents largely breakthrough cases. There are only a handful of individuals who are unvaccinated, and these represent typically children who are not eligible. But, so we're talking less than five of that number. And then of the numbers that we're seeing here, they tend to represent clusters, places where there's more transmission than we might have expected. Some of these are in facilities of town of one sort or another, or else you have a family where, you know, three or four members within a family are all getting affected. So this, I guess my only other comments that I would say beyond what the data that we have here is on the good news, there have been no new hospitalizations from COVID, and there have been no new deaths. I wish I could remain confident that that will be the case, but I think we have to, certainly we know across the Commonwealth, and I'm familiar with the Worcester hospitals, that the hospitals are full. And they're not all full with COVID, but, you know, there's certainly more, an uptick in COVID cases that are affecting the, you know, the hospitalization rates. So in terms of how this might affect the thinking of this group, I think that provides the background. There's more cases. So far, the COVID vaccine seems to limit the severity. That doesn't mean if you get COVID and you've had the vaccine, it's pleasant. I have a friend who, a colleague, whose wife was recently diagnosed, and, you know, she described it as, I feel like my lungs are on fire. But she's at home and she's on, hopefully she won't be hospitalized and this will pass. But, so I think that's the factors that I think are most important. And if there are others on the board who have a different, you know, different perspectives they want to share or supplement with what I've said, I think that's at least the background.
So one thought also is are elderly even vaccinated, you know, there's been data out of other countries, Israel specifically, showing that, you know, with the distance and how long ago they've received the vaccine, they might be more at risk than other people who are vaccinated. So I think not only are our children at risk under 12, but I think we also need to think of our older patients who got the vaccine even earlier. I mean, I certainly agree with everything Alan has mentioned, and it's, you know, it's concerning to see numbers go up. I'm certainly seeing it in my practice as well, mostly breakthrough cases as well, and certainly some hospitalizations. And we're obviously looking towards, you know, a fall of 2021, which is in a lot of ways a completely different virus than the fall of 2020. Unfortunately, much more transmissible Delta variant. And, you know, if we're here today talking about more the town and businesses versus the schools, since we've already gone that route, I certainly have a few thoughts on that. I mean, I can share them now or we can wait, but.
I did want to just add one more thing, which is, you know, I perhaps was on it, and I'm trying to be forthright with all the data, and I agree with what Melissa shared. But if you look at the state case counts, or you look at the death counts compared to last spring, when we had the initial wave, then there was another peak in the fall into the winter, and then we had a smaller bump last spring. The current counts are well below all those in Massachusetts. It's not true around the country, but in Massachusetts, the absolute number of cases still remains relatively low compared to other peaks. And the seven-day average death rate in the Commonwealth is currently around five. So this is much smaller than previous numbers. So the high vaccination rates in Massachusetts are having a positive effect. So you have to balance the good news with also, you know, the fact that there is increased transmission, that the protection the vaccine provides is more against serious illness than is against getting infected in the first place. It does protect against getting infected, but it's not, it's not, that's not a perfect thing. We've heard before that the vaccine is, you know, 90, 95, 98% effective. What does that mean? Well, it still means that people will get infected if they're exposed based on a variety of factors. And it can be, you know, when you're older, your immune system will tend to not maintain immunity as long, or if you have other comorbidities and things like that. But it's not all that. There are clearly breakthrough cases in otherwise healthy individuals for reasons we don't really understand.
So I'd like to just build on that a little bit with some statistics that I was pulling up from the Massachusetts website. And that's that in communities that have, you know, 8,000 people or more in Massachusetts, if you look at the vaccination rates of some of those towns, Nantucket was in the lead with 86%, and that was after the exposure down the Cape where a lot of people got vaccinated right after that. The next best was at 83%, and that was Northborough. 82% was Westboro. The next town on the list is 80%, when that was Southborough. And then Hopkinton was also 80%. And then I think there were maybe three other communities that were at 80%. So us and our surrounding towns are actually doing pretty well in terms of vaccination. We're at the top of Massachusetts, and Massachusetts is really near the top of the United States. So from that perspective, we have a lot of vaccination here. But as people have already mentioned, there are a lot of breakthrough cases. And, you know, I think that in Massachusetts, there are nearly 10,000 breakthrough cases so far. So it does happen. You're not, even though you're vaccinated, you don't have kind of perfect immunity from it, you're still susceptible. But vaccinations do help prevent serious illness. They do keep medical care costs down. They do free up space in the hospitals. And the vaccinations help prevent, but don't fully prevent the spread of the, or getting infected. And I do want to comment on something that Dr. Ehrlich mentioned, and this is something that we call the base rate fallacy. And this is where it might seem like the number of cases of vaccinated people is starting to go up quite substantially. But that's only because we have so many more vaccinated people than unvaccinated people. It is still much safer to be vaccinated than to be unvaccinated. And so just because those numbers are going up, that it's due to the fact that Massachusetts has a lot of vaccinated people. Let's see. But the other thing I want to mention was that each breakthrough case that exists is another chance for this virus to mutate and then start spreading among the vaccinated, which is really what we want to avoid across the world. So we can do our part here in Westboro, we can do our part here in Massachusetts, but some of this is going to be a little bit dependent upon other people in other communities taking actions that make sense. And as much as we can lead through example, I think that, you know, we can help bring other communities around as well. And so I kind of had a list of topics for us that we should at least consider or talk about, not that we need to take action on any of them, but particularly important to me were to think about whether we wanted masks in city buildings, whether we wanted government workers to be required to be vaccinated, and also in terms of, you know, whether we wanted, you know, in private buildings that are open to the public, whether we'd want to have some sort of mask mandate there. And so there's a list of kind of items that I think should be appropriate for a discussion here, not that we want to take action on any of them, but at least so that we're kind of all on the same page as we leave today. And we do expect that anything we put in place today is about the current conditions today, and that we really would like to have some sort of, you know, what would be the steps at which we want to change the policy, the rollback, or make it more stringent again.
Can I, can I just ask you a question about your numbers? To clarify, the breakthrough cases are not actually being tracked unless they're hospitalized. So the 10,000 number that you mentioned, I don't know.
Is that just for hospitalization? I'm not positive on that.
I would need to check that myself, but as far as I know, outpatient positive cases, they are not tracking whether or not they're positive and whether or not they're breakthrough.
So in Westboro, we do look at that. So I don't know what's happening in the state, but Ray, when you are doing contact tracing, will we establish their vaccine status? Is that correct?
Just so everyone can hear me. Yes, what I've been doing is, when I get a case, I look on MIIS and look to see when they were vaccinated. And usually in the notes, I put the type of vaccine and the dates. So we do know in town which ones are breakthrough.
Which we could add to the report, is that?
Jen, could you speak into the microphone?
Which we could add to the report for you as well.
Yeah. Which, by the way, when I talk to Ray, that's usually the first question I ask him, is were they vaccinated or not?
So I do have a couple of comparators of other towns or other places that have done things. I don't want to take too much time with this, but there's been numerous towns that do have mandates for masks in city buildings. A lot of them tend to be larger cities like Somerville, Brockton, Framingham, but there's quite a few towns that do that. As far as government workers required to be vaccinated, there are a couple of towns so far. I think it's only been a few days since the vaccine has received full approval from the FDA. So it's now no longer an emergency use authorization for Pfizer. And while that's important in some people's mind, I've been a proponent that the safety of this vaccine is substantial, and I've been convinced of it long before the FDA gave it full approval. But Equina and New Bedford, I think, are at least two of the places where they're requiring all of their city and town workers to be vaccinated. And then there's a list of, you know, corporations that are requiring vaccinations, everybody from the Pentagon, Facebook, Google, Twitter, CNN, The Washington Post, Morgan Stanley, Walmart, Uber, Lyft, Cisco, the New York Stock Exchange Trading Floor, you know, and then a number of, you know, public health facilities, UMass Medical Center, you know, Beth Israel Leahy Health, New York City Public School Teachers are all required. So there seems to be a trend in that direction, and it's a matter of whether we want to take those actions as well, or whether we want to, because of our vaccination rate already, that we don't think it's necessary. So I don't know, I'd love to get some feedback from the rest of the board members and also the Select Board in terms of, you know, what you think might be some of the pushback or other non-health-related issues that could come up as well.
I'm happy to give, oh, Kristi, I don't miss you. Go ahead.
Are you asking specifically about comments around mandated vaccine?
Either the vaccines or the masks, you know, in terms of if we wanted to take that, you know, as far as something to decide tonight, you know, what issue should we be aware of that are non-health related, you know?
Well, in terms of mandating the vaccine, there's a number of issues that, you know, that would need to be considered. I think, you know, Governor Baker came out on Thursday and he mandated it for all state workers, having not yet put in place policies around exemptions and how that would work forward, also having not negotiated with any of the unions. And so I would strongly advise that at a minimum, we watch how this plays out at the state level with the unions. His deadline is October 17th. His requirement is to be vaccinated or possibly face termination, which is obviously different from, I think, some of the organizations that you described where there's a testing alternative. So I don't feel prepared to have that conversation tonight, and I think it's a significant change from where we were at the August 10th meeting.
I mean, I think that this is maybe a more important conversation regarding, you know, teaching staff, school staff, which this is not. I assume teachers are not considered town staff, correct?
They are. But you would want to, but you would want to.
That's the school committee.
Right, you would want to have the discussion with the school committee and superintendent.
I mean, it certainly is, is a trend happening, you know, all over the world right now, and I certainly would not want to take it off the table. I mean, I think there are different options, whether it's, you know, vaccination or weekly testing, you know, certainly, but I, I think it's something that should be considered. You know, we have people coming into our town buildings and we should have, make them as comfortable as possible. We have people working in our, for our town and our town workers and, you know, obviously we want to make things as safe as possible, and it is a trend that is happening everywhere. And the vaccine has been approved. And obviously, there are exemptions that some companies, corporations have, you know, a lot of places feel like that list should be quite small, but just saying.
So I think I'd like to just sort of split the conversation along the lines that you had outlined, because I think vaccines and masks have different implications. My own feeling on the vaccine is that we have been very successful in town with very high levels of vaccination rates through a program that I think has been largely one based on education, encouragement, role modeling, and I believe that's the best way to go, that in places where there are big fights over the vaccines, it's often because the specter of mandating in one form or another comes up, and then it's a distraction from the actual benefits of the vaccine, which I think are, we all would agree, are pretty clear. We have achieved high vaccination rates. I attribute about 90% of that to. I attribute about 90% of that to Chief Purcell's work. I think the reason, one of the reasons that the other towns that you mentioned have such high vaccination rates is because of his leadership in getting a vaccine clinic in town or in this area that serve the needs of the local community. And I think that working in that outreach way, that educational fashion is how we should address vaccine problems, at least right now, or vaccine issues. Masking is slightly different, because to me, with the rise in the Delta cases, you know, we're town employers, we're the employer, I mean, as represented by all of you, and you know, there's an element of protecting your employees, and mandating masking while coming into a town building is not an unreasonable thing to do. You don't have to do it, but there's certainly, that's a different level of step, because you're not making a demand on somebody at the risk of losing their job, which is an antagonistic thing in the first place. It is one where you're saying, we are trying, we're looking out for our workers, we're trying to protect them, and we're asking people who come into our buildings during this time period, and again, as Nathan said, whether you do it now and then have a, a point where you say this is no longer needed, or you don't do it now and say this is a point when we might count in, that, that to me is something that I think is, is a reasonable step, consistent with a broad public health advice, you know, throughout this pandemic.
So one of the things I want to mention is that the type of things we're talking about, whether it's masking or vaccines, can fall under what we would consider a safety precaution at your place of employment. And so if there is a protocol in place for how you do something safely and you violate that, then that would be a mechanism where, you know, someone could be terminated. I mean, regardless of COVID-19, there's certain things that if you do at your job that are just unsafe, that it is grounds for termination. And so the question is whether this rises to that level, whether we want to try to put that extra burden on there, you know, do we think that, you know, not getting vaccinated or not wearing a mask properly, or doing any of these things that we're thinking about, whether that would kind of fall into this category? And certainly, we could have other protocols where you can get tested or thing, you know, things like that. But I do want to just bring that up, that there are places that, and the courts, I think, have upheld states and places that have put in these mandates where people have been terminated and the courts have upheld it because it is a safety violation. So I just kind of wanted to lay that, that framework as we continue to discuss this, but I think that Alan is right, that, you know, we need to kind of make sure everyone's on board before we put these into effect. So I don't think it's likely we'll put a mandatory vaccination today, but it is probably good, Christie, to start talking to the unions and figuring out what it is that might be their holdups, if there are holdups. Maybe we can try to find ways to address it, and we actually, if, well, not when, but if we wanted to put forth any policy that did require a mandate as far as vaccinations. You have comments on that, or?
I'm just surprised to hear it. Given where we were two weeks ago in the conversation, we've sort of jumped from not requiring masking unless someone wants to, and continuing to have in-person, unmasked meetings, to mandated vaccination of our employees. So I know that things are changing quickly, and I appreciate that, you know, certainly always willing to have a conversation. I just feel like, given the conversation on, I think it was the 10th, you know, I guess I would have expected some other sort of opportunities before getting to a mandate.
So we're, I'm not, we haven't proposed or voted on a mandate yet. Part of this public meeting is the only time that we get, as far as the Board of Health, get to talk to each other.
Right.
And so to make sure that we talk about it, even if it doesn't go into effect, is important for, for these meetings. So I do hear you, though.
And I, I think when we, you know, look back and we look at not just vaccination and not just masking, but, you know, a number of mechanisms were put in place to protect the health and safety of town employees in incremental measures. In most of our work locations, not all, but in most of our departments, employees are physically distanced, and that certainly helped. We have people entering the building from within the community and from without. Some departments still have their plexiglass separators, others have felt comfortable taking them down. You know, my thought this evening is it might be prudent at this point to ask that those go back up, is a basic barrier between employees and the public. Maybe now is the time to do that, minimal impact. I think we can explore, you know, explore masking. In our last meeting, we talked about signage, recommending that people mask indoors, and potentially even saying if, you know, self-police, if you're not vaccinated, you should mask. And whether we want to step from that up to mandating masks within the building, I think is, whether it's tonight or at a subsequent meeting, that the time is right for that discussion. I'm hesitant to take any action on requiring vaccination for employees at this time, because we, given the governor's order covering executive branch employees, which is not every employee for the state, and the fact that the state Human Resources Division has yet to provide any policy or guidance on what that might look like, it's unclear if there's been any conversation with unions and what impact bargaining might play into that, we have too many uncertainties at this point with the mechanisms and the logistics. And I think it would actually be, we're probably a couple of weeks premature for starting any conversations with our, with our unions on that. And also, I feel that when we're ready to have that conversation, it's probably most appropriate that that actually be done in an executive session, because it does involve negotiations with both union and personnel policies that affect non-union personnel.
I would respectfully disagree. I think that safety protocols that we want to put in place, I personally feel don't belong in an executive session, but should be discussed openly and so that people can hear the, what was being discussed. I think if we wanted to talk about individual cases or exceptions, I believe that's the case for an executive session, but I think that this is probably premature to go down that route anyway at this point in time, unless you're proposing that we continue to discuss vaccination requirements tonight.
No, I would propose that we have some sort of, I don't want to use the word task force, or just plan to research what it would entail, you know, and the steps to, to do that, and in case we end up going that route. But I, I mean, I agree, our, I mean, I'd love to know the numbers of, you know, we know Westboro, I'd love to know the breakdown of residents versus, you know, people who work for Westboro. In Westboro, you know, I'd like to know those numbers. I don't know if we have them, who are vaccinated. I think that's an important number. And obviously, you know, Westboro has done a wonderful job vaccinating, and it's, it's great. But I think we should know or start the footwork, just to know in case we do decide to go that route. So we aren't, you know, dropping it on people before they're ready, kind of thing.
So I think that with that, maybe we can pivot from vaccinations. Oh, you've got more about vaccinations?
I just, one thing, I just want to go back to what Dr. Ehrlich said. I do, I do think you were spot on in what we did as a town, and it really helped, and not giving kudos to Chief Purcell, because his head's getting too big back there, so. No, but I think the encouragement piece was exactly the word I was going to use, and I think we did a really good job with that, and I think we can do that now. We're not forcing vaccinations, but there's nothing that says we can't encourage that with town residents and town employees, and I think we should come across strongly and encourage folks to do that, because I think it is, as has been explained by you, is more experts than myself here, but I do think that is something we should be doing and continue to do, and especially now in light of the regulatory approval for at least one of the vaccines. I think getting out there that, that we encourage our employees and our residents to, that are eligible to get vaccinated should be something we take upon us as a, that's a statement from the joint boards or whatever. I think that would be something I'd be supportive of. Don't I want to go on a discussion of?
No, actually, why don't we do that? Why don't we have a recommendation from the joint boards, that the town employees and the, the town residents get vaccinated if they're not vaccinated, and if they're only partially vaccinated, that they continue to get fully vaccinated? And I would ask also, and perhaps add to the booster piece of that, that? At this point in time, I think that it's clear for those that are immunocompromised or that have some other comorbidity, that, that probably is advisable to get the booster when they're kind of eight months out. I haven't extensively looked at the data, though, and so I'd probably prefer to leave that part out at this point in time. Not that I'm against it, it's just that I personally haven't looked at that data yet.
Yeah, I think, I think guidelines for the booster are obviously evolving and are going to rapidly be changing, is the sense that I'm getting from some medical community and experts. So yeah, I think that that, that will change, but not, we don't, we can't say just now for people who have already been vaccinated and aren't high-risk, so.
Question. So the 82% number provided earlier, that's all residents?
That is all residents, including the, actually, no, I think that was all the residents.
Do we know what the percent is for eligible residents?
So I believe that was of eligible residents, not of 0 to 12.
That was all?
No, the 82% is all residents, includes children who are ineligible. The, if you ask Ray, and Ray, maybe you want to come up, for eligible residents in almost every age group, it exceeds 95%, except the 20 to 29-year-olds.
Yeah, so the numbers have a plus or minus 2%, as we noted with the, with the population that we had from the state. It was a mi, it's a plus or minus, I think it's 3%. So with all our numbers from the state, we're showing 95%, 95%, 95%, 92, 89. I think overall, I think the 84% is all the ones that were eligible, because we were at 89% for people who could get the va, I'm sorry, everybody, and the eligible was 89% last time I got it from the state.
So I believe that those numbers have the 2018 census as the base rate of number of people. The numbers that I was looking at basically had it divided out by age group, and they were specifically summing up just the people that were 12 and up, and then compared that.
I don't have those numbers. I don't know where we could get them. I tried with the schools, and they don't have definite numbers either.
This is from the state, I can point it out after this.
Okay, yeah, because we, the state's using the other numbers, so that's what I used.
I believe, if, can we just discuss these numbers for a second? So the state, every week, puts out town by town data, and I thought on those, if you look at these specific age groups, the state has essentially 95% or higher for almost every age group. Then when you look at the total, it actually is greater than those numbers for the specific age groups, because it includes the 0 to 12, to get to that 82% or whatever.
When I summed it up, the sum of the, each of the age groups from 12 to 18, and you know, each of those other ones added up to the same total that they were using.
Okay.
But.
So my question, I'm just looking at the chart that was provided, I think it came from July 29th, and I have a couple of questions about this, it's the latest data I have. And on this, it shows fully vaccinated and partial vaccinated, and it says that out of, for example, the 12 to 15-year-old group, there's 1,028 individuals, fully vaccinated 1,023, which is greater than 95%. It further goes on to show partially vaccinated 127 and 12%. How is that possible for us to be over 100%?
The census.
Because they're using 2018 data as your denominator, and vaccines actually given as your numerator.
I don't have.
So if you have more kids who are 12 to 15 now in town than were three years ago, you have a denominator that is smaller than your numerator.
Well, I also think our census number was over 20,000, closer to 21,000 versus that number, which is saying we're 18,000.
Yeah, and just another piece of data in regards to the percentage, I believe the CDC currently has us at 92% vaccination, as opposed to the state. So I don't know why the state and federal are different, but they're both above 90, which is great.
They're all good numbers.
They're all good numbers, exactly.
Shelby raised her hand electronically, she's got a question.
Thank you, Alan. Just with respect to the vaccination effort across the town, as well as employees, I guess one thought that I would have, certainly I'm not in a mandate mindset at this point by any means, and I guess I'm wondering, given the FDA's approval of Pfizer, I'm wondering if we might consider, building off what Dr. Walsh had said, a, you know, sort of a renewed effort, not only for residents, but certainly employees, to make sure that they know where they can go to get the vaccine, and to sort of do round two of that promotion, if you will, and support and encouragement for folks to get the vaccine. Because I think now is the time we want to do that, certainly before a winter or fall surge, and folks that may have been on the fence may feel more comfortable given the FDA approval. So I would be supportive of that sort of communicate, you know, those public health communications across the board, and including internally to staff.
Christie?
Yeah, I would just, it sounds similar to the local state home advisory that these two boards did. So it was an advisory, but it was, you know, it was something that you would, you all had voted on and that we put out to the community, and that was something that Steve and I had previously worked on, so I think Jen and I could work on something and then get that out, and we could just run it by the chairs, get that out more quickly.
I think that'd be great. I think that encouragement, getting out there, is exactly what we should be doing, at least at this point.
Yes, I would agree with that as well. I was just going to mention that I, I think that's really important, but I would also mention, I don't want to lose sight, I am supportive of the, the ask, I think, by a portion of the Board of Health in regards to being prepared for those conversations around if we do decide, because I don't think we should eliminate it off the table at some point, we may have to make the decision around vaccinate, mandating vaccines. I don't support that right now. I don't think it's necessary to mandate that, but I do think that that's something that we need to be prepared for, because this uptick is, if I'm reading the numbers correctly, you know, over the last four weeks' data points, we've gone from seven to 14 to 33 cases, and that's a pretty, that, percentage-wise, that's a pretty significant jump from there to the, you know, and over. And I'll also mention that, as reported on ABC News last night, there's been over 180,000 children cases in the United States in one week. That's a tremendous uptick in that, in that age group. Granted, we haven't seen that in Westboro yet, but I do believe that we need to be in front of this, and we need to be prepared on, to have that vaccination conversation if it continues that route.
So to keep us on track a little bit, I think that having you guys work on the kind of statement to address the employees is, is great. I'm on board with that.
And the community.
And the residents, yes. We do have a proposal that we have a joint statement from the two boards. If we want to go ahead with that, I'd entertain a motion for that.
I move that the Board of Health endorse a joint statement with the select board that recommends, or urges, all those in Westboro, whether it be citizens or employees who have not yet been vaccinated to, or have not completed their vaccination schedule, to get fully vaccinated as soon as possible, especially in light of the full FDA approval of the Pfizer vaccine.
And from the Board of Health, do we have a second on that?
Aye, second that.
All in favor? Aye?
I'd make, I'd make a motion from the select board, basically to support the same motion that Dr. Ehrlich had from the planning board that was just voted on, to urge, encourage the residents and town employees to, to vaccinate.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. We'll take a vote, all in favor? And Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
So it passes 5-0, five being present.
Thank you.
And so I think that as we now turn our focus a little bit toward masking, I think the, one thing to consider, we didn't really break it down in the earlier case, but there's kind of public-facing employees, there are people that don't really interact with the public, and then we also have the public itself when they're in kind of public buildings and that sort of thing. So I just want us to take a few. and that sort of thing. So I just want us to take a few moments to kind of think about those three different categories. We may end up with same policy for everybody. We may end up with no change in what we're doing now, but they do have some slight differences between those three groups of people.
So the one thing I would say on the conversation about masking is, and again, I'm going to pick on Ray to help enlighten us, at least within the Westboro community, public buildings are not how the disease is being spread. Doesn't mean it can't happen in the future, but the cases he's been identifying over the last month have had very particular circumstances to them that have nothing to do with sort of general day-to-day business, whether it be town or Walmart or, you know, those types of facilities either. I don't know if you want to enlighten us at all, Ray?
Yeah, obviously go into as much detail as you can without going into too much detail. We don't want to.
No, I, so what we're seeing is in the, hold on, excuse me. Want to make sure I have my numbers right. In the 33 cases that were in the last 27 days, out of those 33 cases, we had three family units, one of four, one of three, and I believe another of three. So that's 10 right there off the top. It's households. So we had one person get sick and they spread it to everybody else in the household. So that's what we're seeing there. And out of those, only two children were below the age of 12 on those groups. We've had groups, as Dr. Ehrlich said earlier, of living conditions. We do have a lot of senior living facilities in town, and we do have cases going there. And that was a group of those. And I think Jen actually has the rest of the notes, because I didn't think I was going to be at the meeting tonight, because I was at the firefighter barbecue. So I didn't think, so you have the rest of those notes?
You actually covered it all.
I did cover it? Okay, well, I did cover it. So we do have, in a few of the cases we do have that are on our list, actually, I couldn't find their residency in Westboro, so they may not actually be Westboro cases. Two of the cases were sent out. They were Northeastern University students who are from town, but they caught it in Northeastern and they stayed at Northeastern. So those were on the list, but I didn't get the information until after the report was done. So two more of those will come off. So we actually have, instead of 33, we're 31. And that, if you, out of the 27 days, you're looking at a case a day, just about. When other towns are getting 27 in a day right now, I'm talking to my colleagues, and they're like, oh, are you getting inundated? I said, well, I had five over the weekend. And they look at me and say, I had 37. So that shows that Westboro's rates are lower than a lot of others. And like Dr. Ehrlich said, we can't stop doing what we're doing, but we have to show that, you know, there is faith in the town people and the town staff. And I, you know, personally, I know a lot of people who have gotten vaccinated, and there's not too many in town that I do know that haven't gotten vaccinated. So I don't know if mandates will actually work or upset people. So, you know. But other than that, the numbers are the numbers. We have 27 active cases. And out of those 27 active cases, 11 are in one facility, six are in another facility, and the rest of the families. Any other questions on the numbers?
Yeah, so I appreciate the data and the collection of the data. I guess, in my opinion, a little bit of, we're kind of assuming and making some speculation on where even groups, you mentioned family members and the likelihood of them contracting it as an individual and then spreading it within the household. There are certainly other use cases or scenarios, I think, that are completely appropriate. And there's no way for us to actually know if that entire family went to any, any place, they could have contracted that as a whole.
Yes, but I think what Dr. was saying is, we didn't have a camp explosion, like one kid went to camp and 12 other kids got it.
Correct.
We're seeing more pods, families getting it here, a group of family, who knows, maybe the two families were together.
Right.
But we're not seeing one person here, one person here, they all work for the DPW or anything like that.
Right.
We're seeing pods. So, I mean, I've been doing these numbers with Steve for the past 16 months, and we can see where the trends are. And what we're seeing, and when we see family units, we see where the family units are coming from. We had, back in March, we had a case where there was a, just this past March, not last year, where there was a festival, an ethnic festival, and we had 22 cases, and they all were at the same residence. And we found that out by doing our contact tracing.
Sure.
So with the contact tracing we're doing here, we're not seeing any other of these groups tied together. They could have gotten it at the grocery store.
Yeah.
We don't know. But what we're saying is, we're not finding people who came into my office and did a plan review and then called me two weeks later saying, hey, Ray, I have COVID, let your staff know. So we're not seeing it. Because of contact tracing, people are telling us where they're going.
Sure.
And we're not seeing them in town buildings. And I think that's what Dr. Ehrlich was saying.
Yeah, all I'm saying, all I'm thinking is, is there is no force field around public spaces that says that people can't contract it in those spaces. The data and the contract tracing you're doing is helping kind of lead us in the right direction of what, where it could have happened. But the fact is, it can really come from anywhere.
And, and we understand that, too. And it's the same thing as, you know, with masking. If, like the governor did before, what we all went through, where we had the masking in every building in the town, it wasn't just town buildings. And I think tonight you guys, you were looking at town buildings. And just the town buildings isn't going to cover everything. So, I mean, that's, you know, you're saying, you just made that point yourself, saying, we don't know where it's coming from, but you're discussing town buildings tonight. You're not talking about the whole town.
Nothing's off the table for me.
Nothing's off the table.
Yeah. So I know, but I'm just saying, that's what we were discussing, so.
Yeah.
Shelby, raise your hand.
Okay.
Alan, you made this point earlier that the masks, we had asked at our last meeting with the Board of Health, we had agreed to have some signs posted in our public spaces. I have not been in those public spaces since our last meeting, so I don't know if those signs are posted. Christie, can you give us an update on that?
We do have some signs posted. I don't think we've updated signage.
Ray, before you step down, I had a question. Is, is travel still one of the biggest risk factors when you look at these, either the family units or the living units, like how it got brought in there initially? I assume it's not a lot of Westboro to Westboro.
So one of the cases was a airplane travel out of the country. And that was covered by, actually, Boston took it because of a family unit. It was a group in town here and their family members from another town. And it came, it became a cluster, and the state was handling, state handles all those clusters. So that's one of the families, but it was out of the country travel.
I mean, my thought is that we know, we know Delta is highly transmissible indoors, even transmissible outdoors, we're finding. And so, you know, as a town, to protect our staff and the people coming in, to me, you know, seeing the uptick, seeing what's happening in all of Massachusetts, and which is now flagged as high transmissibility, I think it would be smart to start masking in town, in town buildings and town meetings and town staff. You know, how, how would that be for someone who has an office, you know, private office? You know, in the medical community right now, you know, people who have private offices, administrative offices, you know, they don't mask in their offices. But when you're, you know, with the public or in a closed space with other people, people are masking. I mean, I think it just makes sense to be proactive with what we're seeing, you know, even though our town is doing well, with what we're seeing in the state, with what we're seeing everywhere, you know, this, this variant is, is so incredibly contagious. And it's, to me, it just makes sense to be proactive and not wait until we start seeing, because we know what this virus does. And, you know, and while we do have a very high vaccination rate, we have 12 and under, you know, a very good population of 12 and under who is completely unvaccinated and at risk. So I, while they might not be the ones going to town buildings, you know, doing things, I don't know.
So when you talk about how incredibly transmissible it is, it is certainly more transmissible than the original virus. But, you know, it's been around now for several months. And even though we're seeing an uptick in cases in Westboro and in Massachusetts, again, it's nowhere, it looks like an uptick because we're starting at very low levels that prevailed a couple of months ago. But the absolute numbers, you know, not just in Westboro, but across the whole state, are still very, well below what we had previously seen. And to me, what this is saying is that the vaccine works for the most part. It's not perfect, and we're dealing with millions of people, so you will have cases. And the fact that it is transmissible means we're going to see cases. But if you look at the trending graphs, there's, at least to me, and I can't share on the screen, but it looks to me like we have sort of leveled off, that we're not seeing exponential increases in cases, that the case rates on a daily basis are tending to flatten. And certainly, when you look at the seven-day moving average, it's, it seems to be peaking at this point at a much lower level than has previously been the case. And so I'm not convinced that we need to take more action just in case. I, I want to work off of what the data shows, and the data can change, and I understand that. I do want to make one other point about the issue around how people get the virus. There is no force field around town buildings or around the town of Westboro. But we do know that not all encounters carry equal risk of transmission, and that the transmissible risk is related to duration of the encounter, to the, how large the space you're in is. It's clearly much less transmissible outdoors, where there's a lot, large volumes of air to dilute the potentially infectious particles. And to the extent that you're indoors, in small rooms for prolonged periods of time, your risk goes up. And so I think that's, those are the considerations, from my perspective, that apply to town buildings is, well, how much of those factors are present? How much can be mitigated by the plastic shielding, as Allen Edinburgh had said? Those are, to me, factors that we ought to be discussing as well. You know, again, there's certainly, there are reasons to consider asking everybody to wear masks in indoor buildings. It's, it's not clear-cut to me that it's like, well, this is a slam dunk, we should definitely do it because there's no downside. There are downsides to things, to everything. And you have to say, what is the potential gain? And looking at, how likely is it that there's going to be transmission within town buildings is a major factor in deciding, is it worth having this policy in place or not?
So I guess, I don't know about you all, but I'm kind of sick and tired of this pandemic. You know, it's, I'm hearing a lot about friends, relatives, acquaintances that have become sick, people have lost their jobs, and even deaths in families. And I think there's a lot that we can do. The uptick is just, is just that, it's an uptick. And while you're absolutely right on, on the spaces and the factors that apply to the ability to contract it, the fact is, the CDC just can't, you know, has updated their research, their report or their information. And then they stated, "At this time, as we build the level of vaccination, we must also use the preventative strategies available, including masking indoors and public places, to stop transmission and stop the epidemic. Additionally, the last two Surgeon Generals just came out recently. Dr. Jerome Adams of the Surgeon General under the Trump administration stated on July 18th, 'Easing of the mask guidelines were premature in the face of rising infections caused by the Delta variant.' He went on further to state, 'He regrets his former messaging, that it was misrepresenting and wrong.'" And current Surgeon General, who was also Obama's Surgeon General, David Murthy, stated on July 29th, "It's important to take extra steps, go that extra mile, wear that mask in door settings, so you don't contribute to transmission." The fact is that transmission of any kind, in my understanding, could result in another variant, and it even more transmissive, more deadly, as it continues to go around. I hate wearing this mask. It's hard for me to speak in a public session like this. You guys can't see my emotions. But I think it's really important that we see this uptick, and I think that we do the right thing in the interest of public health and safety, versus, in my opinion, some of the discussion that happened last time, we talked around civil liberties and the concerns around civil liberties. Our forefathers put life and welfare before liberty in both the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. So my feeling is, it's in the best interest, we should move forward with that mask mandates. And, you know, there's a lot of other data that I can share. I'll mention Southborough, just announced, and they're a town of 10,169 with a similar vaccination rate of 93%. They just announced that effective immediately until September 30th, the public will be required in their masks or face coverings when entering into public town buildings. And Winchester, which is 21,000 people and a similar vaccination rate, the Board of Health voted to adopt as a public health mandate, masks are required in indoor public spaces, houses of worship and indoor private spaces open to the public. I think that those are reasonable expectations to help prevent the transmission of this deadly disease. I personally would like to see us get beyond this. And I feel that as Westboro is at the interchange of the center of the state, we are on the intersection of 495 and the Mass Pike, which is the second-largest traveled route in Massachusetts, and we sit between the two largest cities. I think Westboro has a really, a good opportunity to stand proud in the light of the way we, in a way in being a model community in the fight against COVID. I think this is a real opportunity for us to step up and do the right thing for our community.
Thank you. I had a question for Dr. Ehrlich, and that's, as we go from seven cases a month to 14 cases a month to 33 cases per month, where would that line have to be if you'd be comfortable with wanting a, you know, doing something extra like a mask mandate? You know, it, those are all small numbers, and so I'm not trying to argue that that's exponential growth because they're small numbers. But I do think when you look at kind of the larger numbers of the county or the state, it does look like it might be going up and then maybe plateauing. But it could just as easily just be a, you know, continue to skyrocket. And so, at what point, you know, does it come to you where you think that this is a, you know, a case where we might need to do, do more?
So I think one of the things that would make me feel that that might be necessary is precisely the point you just raised, which is, what's happening, first of all, although I do focus mostly on Westboro, but statewide. If I see that statewide, because that's where the most frequent data is getting reported that I have access to, I talk to Ray once in a while, but, you know, on a daily basis, the state's reporting out numbers, if it looks like, in fact, the Delta virus is sort of not continuing to spread at increasing numbers throughout the Commonwealth, because the whole point is, the notion of herd immunity is not that no one will ever get sick. It is that when someone gets sick, there's a limited number of people who are easily, who the virus can easily be transmitted to. And so if, in fact, the statewide numbers start trending downward, even slowly, albeit at an elevated level, as opposed to if there's an inflection point. If there's an inflection point, they start going up again, then I'm going to have a different perspective. That's at the statewide level. As far as at the town level goes, the biggest factor for me is, because this is where we can get much more granular data, what's happening with the nature of transmission? If you're having clusters, okay, we understand, then those areas need stepped-up interventions to try and contain the spread. If you see a lot of random people getting sick, and we're not sure how that's happening, then that's more concerning. And I think masking would be something I'd be a stronger advocate for at that point. This gets back to when we were first dealing with the schools and the hybrid situation. We were talking about what is more worrisome? Is it more worrisome if you have one class that's got five or six cases, or is it, you got five classes, each with one or two, and it looks like the spread may be happening horizontally in that situation? I'm more concerned in the latter case. And I'm not seeing what I would call horizontal spread in the numbers coming out of Westboro. I'm seeing clusters. And clusters imply there's a particular problem that can be dealt with in a particular way. And that it's not clear, to your point, that then masking is doing anything to fundamentally limit the actual spread. So I want masking to be clearly effective in order to be advocating for it. It's effective in a broad public health way that I don't dispute in the slightest. Whether it's effective in this particular instance is really the issue from my perspective. Whether it's effective in this particular instance is really the issue from my perspective.
So, at our last meeting, we talked about the R-factor.
Yes.
Do we know where our R-factor is and how it's trending?
I don't think we do. I don't know. I don't know if any, either of you have data on that.
I don't have solid data, but I do know that it does vary, I mean, within a household, if you have one person in your household that is sick, what we're seeing is that there's a good chance that all four members or three out of the, however many members are in the household, will get sick. In that case, that R-factor is higher. But when you start talking about, you know, your friend or your, you know, business colleague that you're working with, that R-factor's a lot lower. And so as I think Dr. Ehrlich was pointing out, is that the duration, you know, that time that you spend exposed to somebody, the distance, the proximity, come into play with that R-factor. Physical barriers do help, I mean, the plexiglass barriers, the masking, those sorts of things all help. A layered approach is really good, because that way, even if you don't have 100% participation of vaccinations, or 100% of the people wearing masks, or 100% of the people staying six feet apart, each layer that people are doing is helping. So we can certainly drive some of those numbers higher. It does involve us giving up some of these liberties in order to do that, and the question is, is there a health benefit for that right now? You know, cases are still low in Westboro. We are watching it really closely. We don't want the numbers to go up. We don't want to have to look at it and be like, you know what, if we had acted sooner, we could have stopped a lot of these new cases from occurring. It's hard to predict the future. We don't know exactly what the cases are going to be like next month, so we don't know exactly how fast to implement things. We need to balance that.
I would just, by way of historical perspective, so when it was at the worst here in Westboro, we were seeing 60, 50 to 80 cases a week. Okay, so, you know, 200 to 300 cases a month. So, you know, that at least puts it in perspective. It doesn't mean we want to wait till we get there. I don't want to wait till we get there. There's no question about that, so.
Yeah, so just a couple of thoughts. One of the things I'll mention is, unfortunately, there is a sizable population in this town that did not and will not take part in the town, in that nationwide census. The second thing, there's also a population in this town that I'm aware of that refuses to be vaccinated for personal reasons, and in that population. So just to bring that forward, you talked about state data, the CDC from our last meeting, where Worcester County was considered substantial. Worcester County and five of the bordering 10 other counties to Worcester County are all now high-risk, and the other five are all now substantial risk. So there's been a tremendous uptick in the area. Worcester itself is only at a 57% vaccination rate. And again, we live at that crossroads. Unfortunately, while we can tell people or advise people to minimize their contact in confined spaces, the fact is, you can't prevent that. What you can do is say, "We require you to wear masks in our town," so that even if you have to stay in a confined space for a longer period of time, you lower the risk of that transmission. And I think that's a reasonable approach. I understand that masks aren't the perfect end-all-be-all, but the fact is, I think I agree with Select Member Edinberg, that, you know, by doing layers of protection, we help with that prevention, and we can, you know, hopefully, again, end this quicker and be that light in the middle of Massachusetts.
I mean, the layers of protection that have been proven time and time again to prevent this disease is masking and vaccines. You know, those are the two that are the most important, and I continue to agree that making a statement as town leaders by, and following other towns around us, and looking at other towns around us as, you know, we are a place where people are going through, as Patrick is saying, I think it's important to do that, to think about masking in our town, spaces, and our people who work for our town, so.
You know, you just made me remember, you know, right now, I think we have kind of a bifurcated approach between our school and what we have here as a board. And I think it's really important, I think you mentioned it earlier, Dr. Walsh, that we need to kind of have one path forward. So I hope that we can get to that tonight.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think, listen, I lean back on looking at the data. I mean, I think it's, and to what we heard, we're talking here about one case a day, and we hope it doesn't get higher, but I think Dr. Ehrlich mentioned too, looking at the data from the state, and are we at an inflection point, or are we, have we peaked? We don't know yet, we're looking at it. I think we, my take is, we can watch it. I personally am not at a point where I think we need to mandate masks across the town or in town buildings. I think both of those are talked about, but, so I'm not sure where we are on those, but in either case, I don't think we need to mandate that at this point. Again, I think, to what we talked about last time, it sounds like we may have some signs up but haven't updated others. I think we should, again, encourage folks, if they're not vaccinated or those that are uncomfortable, to wear masks. But I guess for me, it's kind of looking at the data and following the numbers. I don't know that, at this point, for Westboro, that mandating the wearing of masks, either by folks coming into town buildings or town employees, to me personally makes sense. I think the last piece there is that, you know, as I think about people coming into town hall and the length of stay that are there, I mean, it's probably, these meetings are the longest we have. Most folks and residents coming into town hall are coming in to do some sort of business, whether that's paying taxes, an inquiry in town clerk's office, something in the assessor's office, something in Board of Health or the selectman's office. And if they're, you know, there for minimal amounts of time, I think the risk that we have of infection will not, not there, I think it's a less risk based on the timeframe of the interaction. So that's just my personal take on my side, is look at the numbers. I think we should continue to get these. I think we are back to, fortunately for us, I think we're meeting every week in September now, but definitely two regular meetings. I'd love to see the things, and if, you know, if numbers are spiking, we leave it open to have this joint meeting, similar to what we had in the past, and take action as necessary, following what the numbers look like.
So I just wanted to say that in terms of following the numbers, one of the criteria that our board had given the interim director was, in terms of the reports, that we didn't need them weekly, the numbers were so low that we didn't need to, but we had a trigger point for us, which was, I think, 10 cases per week.
And last week, when I was on vacation, we went up to 14. So I did that report on Friday, and I plan on doing one this Friday.
Yeah, so I think that-
I think we'll go up to weekly.
Going forward, we'll probably start doing that. We may want to make those now available on the website, and I think this will be part of the way that we track the numbers. And again, if we're seeing increased cases, we would love to be able to come back and continue to do this. Before I kind of end that, though, I just want to make sure, Dr. Murray, did you have anything else you want to kind of say before we?
I mean, if we're finishing up our talk on town space and town buildings, the only request that I have and that I have made, I think, in the past, maybe just to our board, was the library. I mean, the library is frequented by under 12-year-olds. You know, our children are going back to school masked through October 1st now. I don't know if we can have a mask requirement for our library and not the rest of the town, but that is something that I would recommend.
By way of a little history, when this all first started, and we all, or many of the people in this room met a year ago in March, we did discuss the library rules as a separate issue, and that certainly, I think, I think that's reasonable. There's a higher-risk population there. Again, just as in medical settings, masks are required. I'm not opposed to that, that seems a reasonable thing. You know, as a, again, trying to protect a targeted group, just as I would encourage, you know, if we wanted to say masking is mandatory at the senior center, or, now, there, I think there are probably more downsides at the senior center, is you've got more people there with, say, respiratory issues, maybe on chronic oxygen or things like that, where masking becomes maybe more challenging. But again, were you targeting specific populations that there's an increased risk? I think that's reasonable.
Shelby, you've had your hand up for a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, no, thank you, appreciate that. Good conversation here. So I don't want to repeat what Select Board Member Johnson said, but I would say that we're aligned in our thinking, as well as with Dr. Ehrlich, in that I'm not ready to, I don't think the numbers support a mandate of masking in public or private spaces. I think we have a meeting coming up in two weeks. We're going to see numbers weekly now, which I greatly appreciate from the Board of Health Department, and I think we reevaluate it at that time. Dr. Murray, if I, maybe I misunderstood you, I think that the students are going back masked until September 17th.
Now, the state, the state just changed that to October 1st, correct?
That's been-
Yes, the state did. The state-
They're going to come out tomorrow with formal regulations, but they, the Commissioner Adessi was given the authority to mandate masks through October 1st.
Okay, thank you. So I had not received that, appreciate that, I want to make sure I understood it correctly. So I'm not, I'm not there yet. I think that I'm going to go back to common sense, and if you're going to be in a meeting for a long time, or you're going inside someplace, you're going to put a mask on, and relying on Westboro's highly vaccinated rate at this point, but I'm out there. Thank you.
Sean, before I comment?
Yeah, no, no, thank you. Yeah, I think I'm in agreement as well, that I am in agreement as well. I think, you know, we haven't seen any transmission associated with town buildings. I think, I don't know that it makes sense to, you know, put in a mandate if we don't know that it's actually going to make any difference at this point. I think continuing to monitor, though, I think going from 14 to 33 is significant if we see another jump like that. The next time we get together, we should certainly consider revisiting some of this, but I'm comfortable with staying where we are currently.
Well, I'm comfortable staying where we are currently as well. I would ask that the plexiglass dividers that separate our town employees from the public go up in departments where they've been moved down as an initial step, and that we complete the updating of signage at the entrance to all town buildings, that if you're not vaccinated, you should be wearing a mask, and that, of course, masks are always a good thing, but not yet mandating.
So I want to revisit the library issue, because I do think that that is a different scenario from just general townwide buildings, because of the vulnerable population, as our other board member had said. And I do, as we start thinking about mask mandates for particular areas, anybody who is, like, working an eight-hour shift, being able to pull your mask down to get a drink of water, you know, I don't know what your feeling is on, you know, having some exceptions for eating and drinking, and obviously, that sort of thing. I don't want such a rigid mandate at this point, that it would preclude, you know, someone to be able to take a drink of water, you know, especially if they're not near anybody else.
I'm talking mostly about the children coming into the library. I mean, the staff, vaccinated staff in the library, you know, personally, I do think the library staff should be vaccinated. We know that people who are vaccinated can transmit the virus. We have a vulnerable population of children in this town. Yes, we're not seeing high numbers of cases, you know. As a medical professional, I mean, my goal is to prevent that, and I, you know, we're seeing all over the country very sick children, and I agree that we're not seeing the numbers here yet. We have all these children soon to be going to school, you know, they're going to be masked in school. I just feel like we should follow suit with those guidelines with that age group. But, so, you know, whether it has, yes, I think anyone who's working a long shift should be able to take their mask down and take, drink, or, you know, so no, I don't think we should be policing mask-wearing, you know, in that sense, no.
So would you like to make a motion on the front of libraries?
Nice question.
Sure?
Just based on what you just said, would you be supportive of a mask mandate for children under 10, excuse me, under 12, town-wide?
In any town, oh, in any town space? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, in public space.
So certainly, like the-
I don't, I don't know if I would, in a public space, no, I mean-
So certainly, I mean, like the town soccer fields, or the, you know, something like that, outdoor, right? They're definitely not broad-
I'm not talking about outdoor spaces.
Oh, building space.
I'm talking about indoor, public spaces.
Excuse me, Nathan?
Yes.
So I think the state guidance is still, anybody who is unvaccinated should be wearing a mask, and since kids under 12 are unvaccinated, they should automatically be wearing a mask. So if you're mandating that they should be wearing a mask, they're already mandated, well, it's already, by the state is already saying that children under 12 and people unvaccinated should be wearing masks.
Should, that's correct. My question is, should it be mandated by the town of Westboro?
I'm just, because they were talking about, I just want to make sure that that's still out there.
Yeah, if they're our most vulnerable population, and I get it, right? The library is certainly an area where kids congregate, last longer, stay in areas for longer periods of time, I get it. But there is no controls on, we can't tell people they can't go into buildings, right? And the fact is that somebody who is ill could walk into a building, aerosols in the air, and a child could come in and contract that, and then spread it elsewhere. You know, that's the transmissive part of it. So my question is, in public indoor spaces, would the Board of Health support a mandate on children under 12?
I think that that might go a little too general for me to be comfortable with. I just, I haven't thought about all the different places that that might include, that I might, you know, haven't thought of all the repercussions of. But I do think that there are places where, yeah, the kids under 12 should be wearing a mask, and the library is one of those that is striking me as an area where that should be the case. I don't, I think Alan wanted to jump in.
So I think this has gone in a slightly different direction than I thought was originally being suggested, and let me try and bring it back to what I thought was being proposed, which was that everybody in the library wear masks. And it's dealing with the library building as a specific place because of a high congregation of children, that it's not just if you're under 12, you wear a mask in the library, everybody's wearing a mask in the library for at least the next couple of weeks till we sort things out and see what direction things go. And I'm okay with that, I think that's a reasonable proposal, but then, you know, that's different than what's the requirement for children indoor spaces. I think what Ray was saying was, there's already a state mandate that children in indoor spaces wear masks.
No, there's no mandate.
There's no mandate.
It's just a should. And another point is, this room has an occupancy at the goover of 143. We can't prevent 143 from people from coming in through this room.
If, I want to interrupt-
Well, I think the fire chief could if he was here. I think the fire chief could if he was here.
Let's not get, we can't prevent 143-
So I do want to make one clarification, there's lots of rules about safety and personal hygiene. If you walked into this room and, let's say, didn't have any clothing on, we would not let you in here, right? There are rules about public decorum.
Yes.
And part of those are based on, I think originally on what people thought were safety measures, but if you were to come in here, and the rule is you have to have a mask, and you're not wearing proper attire, then yes, you could be prevented from coming in here. I mean, it's, we'd do it if you were to go into a place and you were not wearing clothes. So to say that we can't do something, just isn't accurate.
No, 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 you missed my point. I'm saying that if we don't make a mask mandate, then we don't have a control over a room like this for preventing 143 people coming into this room. If 143 people came to this meeting tonight, would the Board of Health recommend a mask mandate under that scenario? Because you can't control it. I can't control how many people show up at the library. I can't control how many people show up at the Forbes Building. So, or the town hall, you can't. You can't. I could have a line at the tax assessor's office of 50 people if they wanted to show up. So, how do you, these are, what we're discussing in my view are half-measures. And we've seen a more than doubling uptick. We said when we met last, two weeks ago, that if we saw a significant increase, well, we just saw more than doubling increase. So, now we're saying this week, oh, next time we meet, we're going to, if we see another doubling, then we'll consider some more measures. I guess I'd like to hear from this board as to what the data point is by which we're going to make a decision. If we fall below that data point, great, that's good news. But if we don't and we go over it, what is that? What is that mark that says we are going to mandate that we require masks in open, public open, you know, building spaces?
I assume you're asking the select board, right?
General audience here, if anybody wants to...
So, I'll answer that. I mean, what I've heard from Dr. Ehrlich is evidence of horizontal transmission as opposed to cluster. From our prior meeting, looking at our factor, whether it's town-specific or regionally, where it's, you know, where it's gone up. And last time we talked about, well, if it goes over one, where if someone gets sick, for each person who gets sick, there's more than one other person getting sick, which we also, with our clusters, if you, isn't necessarily the case at this point. And so, I look at those numbers. When we're talking about the library, that makes sense to me because it's an environment comparable to the schools, which is a very different environment than Town Hall and the Forbes Building and the DPW offices and the Forbes Community Center and other town facilities. And, you know, for that reason, I would, I guess at this point to keep things moving, ask the Board of Health if you would make a motion and vote, either to come up with a specific policy for the library, or possibly to say that, you know, the library should mirror the policies in place by the school district, you know, through this magic date of October 1st that has come up today.
Alan, what about the senior center?
Actually, to just kind of keep things moving, can we actually start taking one? Yeah, I would agree.
I think the consensus of the board from the prior discussion is we're not ready. I'm happy to entertain a motion, call vote, but the comments made, the majority of the select board at least, is not supportive of a mask mandate for all town buildings.
Okay, so what I didn't hear was what is the threshold? That's what I want to know. Are we, if we double in the next two weeks and we come together in two weeks, is that the mark that tells us to change something?
In my, personally, in my mind, it depends where the doubling is. If the doubling is strictly within our elderly care facilities, then I'm not sure that warrants. If the doubling is in the general population, or we, you know, see horizontal spread that's outside of familial clusters, then yes, then we would reconsider and look at our, taking our next steps.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, I think if, I'd entertain a motion, if you're willing to make one.
Sure. So, I make a motion to have the library adopt a mask mandate that mirrors our school guidelines currently for masking, at least through October 1st.
I just couldn't quite hear the end of that motion.
Through October 1st. Mirroring the schools.
Yeah, you know, okay. So, I'll second that.
Is there any discussion about? Okay, all in favor? Three ayes. Good, so that policy is now in effect. We need a starting date, I assume, for that. Maybe we should have mentioned that before we all voted and approved it. But you want that to go into place end of the week?
I would suggest a start date of Friday to give the library staff time to develop a implementation policy, some signage and things like that.
Good. And so then, in terms of other buildings, at this point in time, are there any motions from the board? Oh, you've got a question?
Yeah, so we've just included in the library director to the conversation, so I just wanted to ask a question that she had raised. So, since the motion is to mirror the schools, is that, is that specific to the students and children at the library? Or is it, does it include the mirroring of the requirements of school staff?
I believe the school staff and the school kids are both required to be masked, and I think that's what our policy that we're envisioning here as well is too.
But a mom and dad bringing their kids in wouldn't have to mask, just the children?
No, they, everyone, everyone.
Yeah, like if you were to walk into the schools when they open, I assume that you'd be masked as well, yep. And so now, quickly, if there is other buildings that we want to look at as far as the Board of Health for this week, are there any other motions? Okay.
I did want to bring it up for discussion regarding, very much on the same level, regarding businesses and organizations that primarily involve children, involve children, whether it's karate studios, dance studios, gymnastics studios. I mean, these companies, these businesses are looking to us. This is what I'm hearing in the community. They're looking to the Board of Health, they're looking to the town for guidelines on what they should be doing. And we currently don't have any. Certainly, you know, they are also looking to the CDC and getting their guidelines from that too, hopefully. But we certainly are not, we don't have any voice in that right now because we have zero guidelines for these people. And I think as a town, protecting our under 12-year-olds who cannot get vaccinated, we should have guidelines for these businesses that have under 12-year-olds. And that is, that is my thought.
So, I think that we've passed some guidelines today. We have certain guidelines that we're following for schools, and then we now have the library guidelines. I think if people are looking at us as role models, or what do we, you know, how we conduct our business as a town, that's kind of where we are. It's one step short of mandating that everybody else do the exact same thing that we're doing. It does give some businesses right now some flexibility in terms of deciding whether they want to do what the Board of Health is doing, or whether they want to, you know, do something on their own. If you're proposing...
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding, what do you mean, do what the Board of Health is doing? We're not, we don't have any, I'm not even saying, I'm not even saying we need to do a mandate, but I don't think we currently have any guidelines for these businesses, do we?
We just passed a joint board recommendation to wear masks.
That, what, what do you mean? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, to get vaccinated, right?
Vaccinated. And there are state guidelines about unvaccinated individuals and children under 12 being masked when indoors. So, if I were running a dance studio and the guideline says that the people in my facility should be masked, then I personally, as a business owner, would ask or instruct people who are doing business with me to mask up. For my particular office as well, the building I'm in took down the signage. The entrance to my office says clearly, if you are not vaccinated, do not enter without a mask. And my, and we have masks available right inside the door for people who want. Now, I'm not sure, at this point, again, given the numbers, given the nature of the spread, we need to go beyond that. But if the Board of Health wanted to take that mask DPH guideline and craft it specifically for Westboro, I would leave that to you to do now.
So, you're looking at a recommendation from the Board of Health to those businesses that deal with kids that cannot be vaccinated? And kind of guidance from the Board of Health to those businesses to whether they should adopt a masking policy? Is that where we're headed?
I think, right, I think as a town and as a Board of Health, we should have a message, you know, a joint message to these businesses in what we recommend as a town. And yes, the CDC is saying it, you know, lots of organizations are saying it, but what I'm hearing from some of these businesses is, you know, they're looking to the Board of Health for guidance. And right now, I feel like we don't have anything certainly to say, you know, that is written. And I wish we did because I think people are looking for guidance. People, you know, want guidance, you know? They want to be able to tell their parents, the parents of the children, you know, who come to their studios, their karate classes, you know, to tell them, oh, well, we have been told that, you know, we need to do this, or this is advised, you know, whether it's a mandate or advising, you know? I think even just advising the companies in our town to do that in a joint statement.
So, give it, I'm sorry. Was that Shelby?
Can I, I guess, I feel like, you know, when we had to visit this a year ago, we were trying to craft all kinds of messages on our own. And at that time, our town manager said wisely, you know, let's look to the data that's coming out of the state and not, you know, we create the wheel. And there are recommendations, there are tools on the state website, and the recommendations are there. So, as, I think there's, just like we talk about personal individual responsibility, I think businesses can look to the town, can point them to state resources to say...
I'm sorry, but the state has no, there's nothing, there's nothing on the state website regarding this information. So, I'm sorry to interrupt you. There's nothing, I've searched. I mean, if people want to search, and I've asked infectious disease specialists, you know, friends of mine, and I specifically said, does Massachusetts currently have any guidelines for businesses that have children? You know, the governor has gotten rid of all, you know, almost all guidelines. So, there are no guidelines on the website for businesses like this.
Well, I guess, I mean, there are general guidelines out there that we've talked about multiple times tonight, which say if you are not vaccinated, if you are, which of course would be those under 12, you should be wearing a mask. So, there are those guidelines out there. And, I mean, if the Board of Health and the Board of Select would need to reinforce that message, I'm all in support of it. But I don't, I think we're spending way too much time on this because I think it's, I mean, it's well-known information. As a business owner, you have to take care to protect your business and protect the people that are coming through your doors. And it's pretty obvious what you should be doing and what you should be telling your clients. Sorry.
Alan, did you have something you want to add?
So, again, I'm not quite familiar with what the current status of the state guidance is. I do know that there was a rescission previously, and I don't know, I haven't looked recently. So, I'm certainly in favor of endorsing recommendations from the state on how children under 12 should be, should, you know, masked. If the state has guidance that says children, unvaccinated persons in indoor settings should be masked, then I am perfectly happy with our board endorsing that position and making that a recommendation to businesses in town. I don't have any problem with that at all. But I was going to look to see if that's in fact what they're saying, and so I, because again, I haven't looked at this recently.
Would that be sufficient for you?
Yes, I mean, I'll double-check the website, you know, is there a recommendation from the state saying anyone unvaccinated should mask indoors? I know that has come down from the CDC. Is it also on mask.gov? I guess I assume it is, I assume it is.
It is. I'm looking at it right here.
Specifically, right, for...
Effective July 30th, the Department of Public Health has issued a new mask advisory in light of the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's updated guidance.
So, I think we have that motion. You're willing to second that?
No, so I apologize. I specifically was talking about, you know, guidance for specific businesses, you know, with children, that has been removed from the website. Yes, as a state and unvaccinated people masking, yes, they have. But again, I am hearing from town businesses that they are looking to us for guidance, so.
So, we have the motion that Alan made. If you're willing to second that, then we can vote on it.
I second that, sure.
Okay, all in favor? Or three didn't, okay. So, that one passes. I think that now we've got some guidance out there for the businesses. I think that they can also look at our example of how we're dealing with our schools and our library. I think that that's also another positive thing that's not written wording in terms of, but in terms of our actions and how we deal with the kids. So, I think that that might cover all of those issues, I hope. Are there any other things, Alan?
No, just the official language, it is on there, it says, "All unvaccinated residents continue to wear masks in indoor settings," is the current guidance from the state.
Your motion was to endorse that?
Yep.
Do you, would we add that as part of the advisory?
I'm happy to read the exact language from the state website if you'd like.
Oh, no, I'm just...
For the...
For the advisory, yeah.
Yeah. Department of Public Health, okay. "All unvaccinated residents should continue to wear masks in indoor settings."
Okay. I think that goes to our advisory to the town.
Yeah.
Along with the vaccine.
Along with the vaccine recommendation. Be happy with that.
Well, I'm not, I think they covered everything that was on my list of stuff that I wanted to get through tonight. I appreciate the select board for letting us take up so much of your time. I know that you still have a lot of stuff to do, but I do expect that we're going to be following these numbers closely. And we would like to call, you know, emergency session of the Board of Health and maybe do it jointly with one of your meetings if the timing coincides, if the numbers were to change significantly.
Why don't, I would suggest to the chair that we just plan on our next meeting, which is in two weeks. And if we don't need it, we can always cancel it, but for now, I'd...
That's fine.
Set the expectation.
Yep.
Are you available two weeks from now? I'm asking the Board of Health here. We've got some nods.
It's the 7th?
Two weeks?
No, our next, wait, the 14th.
14th.
14th, okay, fine, yeah.
Sorry. That might be three weeks, I don't know.
Yeah, it's three weeks, that's why.
I can't add. Our next meeting is the 14th.
It's all on one hand. How many days in a week?
Okay, so why don't we plan then on us joining that meeting on the 7th?
Yeah, plan ahead. I think if the numbers, you know, things, 14th, we see stuff, we can always call first one, meeting of both boards too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, the 14th.
I move the Board of Health adjourned?
I second it. All in favor? Hi. Good, we've got three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
With information, thank you.
Welcome. I just wanted to say quickly, Ray, thank you very much for all that you've done as interim. Great job in a tough time, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I hope never to do it again. Don't say that. No, we want Jen here for a long time.
Thank you, Jen, thank you. Out of the frying pan into the fire. Okay, so next on the Board, the Select Board agenda is the agenda item, which is a request for appointments. So, the following individuals have requested appointments to the following committees. Their letters of interest were attached in the packet. Bree Dow has requested appointment to Sustainable Westboro. This appointment will fill the final open seat for residents with a one-year term. Robert Washburn has requested appointment to the Council on Aging. This will fill the remaining one year on a term that is open. This will fill the final open seat on that council. Daniel Berger has requested appointment to the Open Space Preservation Committee. This appointment will fill the final open seat on that committee with a three-year term. Alicia O'Brien has requested appointment to the Veterans Advisory Board. Ms. O'Brien is not a resident of Westboro, but she is a patrol officer with the Westboro Police Department and a veteran. This appointment will fill the final open seat on the board. This is a one-year term. And so, any questions or concerns about the requested appointments? Oh, someone's got to move the mouse on the computer. Otherwise, the TV you're on is going to turn off, Shelby.
All right, bye.
Okay. Can't see it on the computer here.
Okay, we have a remote on the TV, actually.
Oh, oh, here comes our TV expert.
It's just on our TV out there.
Westboro TV.
I think it's only the TV that will turn off.
I think it's only the TV. We don't have the remote. We'll still see you on the big screen, Shelby.
So, I'll make, I'll move to appoint Bree Dow to Sustainable Westboro for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. Robert Washburn to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
Robert Washburn to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. Daniel Berger to the Open Space Preservation Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. And Alicia O'Brien to the Veterans Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2022.
I'll second.
Sure. Did we do those separately last time? Were they separate motions, or?
No.
I think we can do it either way, and I was thinking, at 9:00 PM, I could-
No, no, no.
I was trying to expedite it for us.
Okay, so any discussion or comment? Seeing none, I will, before we, having moved and seconded before we take you over, I want to thank these individuals for stepping up to serve their community. It's an honor to have you join the Corps of Volunteers that help Westboro function and succeed as a town. So thank you very much. On that note, we'll take a vote. All in favor? And Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Okay, passes five, zero, five being present. Next on our agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
The report is long, because we've only had one meeting in August, so I'll just go briefly through each of these. I have a draft of the town meeting warrant. We can go through it in the, at the September, air of September meeting. We'll also have some of the larger departments at that meeting to, to talk about the, their warrant articles. At this point, we have about 15 articles on the, on the warrant.
I just have one question on the warrant, when, whether now, when we get there. There was just one article that the dollar amount, what was written, was different, and Article seven.
Yeah, the DPW article.
I, I have the Article seven, which was the golf course budget amendment.
Yeah, we just changed it right before it went out, so I just missed fixing that.
Twenty-seven or 11, which?
It, it's 11.
It's 11, okay.
11, yep.
You, sounds like you had another one. Shelby?
No, no, I saw the same one, and I was thinking it was DP.
American Rescue Plan funds, the board had seen that I had sent out a proposal form to all the departments, and also relevant committees that could potentially apply for those funds, and so we were asking for proposals by August 30th. We really want to sort of get an understanding of what people are anticipating for use of those funds, especially coming up on the October town meeting. And so once we receive the fun, the proposals, which we've started to receive them, the finance team will, will look at them first, and then bring them to the Select Board and also the, the Finance Committee.
Christie, were we still waiting for more guidance?
Yes.
From federal, or?
We are waiting for more guidance. We sent out in advance of that because we really needed to get people started thinking about it. So it's possible that these things will change. It's possible that, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend allocating all the funds right now, but I think it's a good idea, before we start spending them, to just have a broader understanding of how people are thinking they might get spent.
Christie, if, I don't believe we've seen that form, which I would imagine gives the department some guidance. Can you share that with us, just so we have a copy?
Sure. Sorry, I thought I did send it out.
You may, you may have, and if you did, I'll, I'll look in my email.
That's okay, I can send it out.
Why don't you resend it again, because I don't-
Oh, well, then maybe I didn't send it, sorry.
I've seen it, too, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
September meetings, we already talked about. You have four currently, so the 14th and 28th are your regular meetings, and then the 21st is a joint meeting with the Planning Board to receive the final report of the master plan, and then a budget, the Budget Summit planned for the 23rd, so two meetings in that week. And then just moving on, the Employee Excellence Award winner for July was Marco Pesos. I'll just pull out a couple of things in here. He's a relatively new employee of the DPW Cemetery Division. On his own initiative, Marco's employed a phone application to map over 100 trash barrels in order to increase his efficiency and train new employees on trash removal. When assigned the responsibility to take on plowing sidewalks in the winter, he applied the same mapping technique to increase productivity. In the Conservation Department, the new Conservation Director, Sherry Wittes, is actually looking for her replacement in the Conservation Assistant position. The board had previously approved a change in title for that position. And they're also looking for companies, and, and actually, this is an article that, that is not on the draft that you got today. They're also looking for companies that can assist in land management plans for both the Swicker Farm Conservation Area and the Dayprey Property. So that will be an article on town meeting as well. At the Council on Aging, I think you heard it tonight, the Fire Department did have their, their cookout, and we actually were also fortunate to be able to send over some non-public safety staff that don't typically get that opportunity. So Ray mentioned that he was there. We had other folks from different departments. It's a nice thing that they got to do. In the Department of Public Works, they listed many things, as did Council on Aging, but they had good collaboration between multiple parties that contributed to the successful installation of a new sidewalk along Lyman Street. So I know this board has had those discussions previously, and so I just wanted to pull that out. Also, Steve Winchell, a pillar in the DPW, began his transition to retirement. We wish him all the best as he starts a new adventure, and thank him for his service for 39 years.
Wow.
In the Finance Department, we did, we did start applying for the ARPA funds, so we received them, and we have to obviously expend them under the guidelines. And so we've received a total of 2.96 million at this point. In the Planning Department, they spoke to, they've, there's three warrant articles. You saw that one of them is in there, and then we're waiting on additional articles to be drafted, but there's a placeholder. And then the School Department has actually also provided an article related to the dimensional requirements for the failed school. That's something, because it's on a municipal property, town meeting has to do, has to set the setbacks, and there's a need for a shed to be placed outside of the previously set setback, so that'll have to come to town meeting. In the Police Department, Chief Lori and Deputy Chief Minardi both are continuing to do training, and in particular, area of study is the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, which is the post, if you've heard about that. That's a whole new set of requirements for police departments, and something that we're all working to get our arms around. And then Recreation, the block party is this Friday, August 27th, from 5:30 to 9:00. The Town Clerk's Office is waiting legislators to vote on election procedures for the fall of 2022. And in Youth and Family Services, they're ready to launch their new logo and rebranded outreach materials in September. So similar to the library, and also the Recreation Department that has sort of a unique logo there, they've done their own branding.
Quick question, the Budget Summit, do we have a time for that yet, or?
I have a draft agenda I need to send out, but it's, we are going to do it typical, it's like 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
We'll hold that in the great hall.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our meeting on July 20th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion, comments, corrections? Seeing, hearing, none, we shall vote. All in favor of approving the minutes? Select Board Member Marshall?
Marshall, yes.
Five, zero is the vote, passes with five being present. Okay, next on the agenda is issues and correspondence of the Select Board. Shelby, I will put you on the floor. You have the floor. Sorry. I was going to put you on the spot. You're first.
I'm on the screen, I'm on the floor, I'm all over the place. No, I, I have no matters to report on this evening. Thank you.
Patrick?
Sure. So, yeah, a couple of things. I'd like to thank the Youth and Family Services and Brooke Rosenshine, who gave out backpacks and school supplies for over 100 students over the past week at the Forbes Community Center. Additionally, I attended the Rotary Club and Sustainable Westboro EV Car Event on Saturday. It was great to see so many residents attend and share their knowledge, as well as the Police Department showing off one of the new hybrid police interceptors. I enjoyed volunteering and learned a ton. The Little Free Pantry is, we'll be having a ribbon cutting ceremony Sunday, September 12th at the St. Stevens Church parking lot from 12:00 to 1:00. I'd also like to thank John Arnold for appointing the nine-member Town Seal Review Committee. I suspect this was no, no easy task. I look forward to hearing the results of their work. I also attended this past week's Planning Board meeting. The CPA Exploratory Chair, Ken Doherty, presented to the board. There have been known changes to the plan. She's still expecting to bring the CPA through the town meeting and ballot process over the next year. Clear channel, the billboard owners are looking to receive special zoning to allow for billboards on 495. The Planning Board has requested that they provide more information and that a public hearing will be needed. Pete Bouchard was named as the rep for the, to CMRPC. Jim Ball was named as the rep to the capital expenditure. And just as a reminder, September 9th is the last public hearing for the master plan, and September 21st will be a joint board meeting to discuss the master plan.
Okay, great, thank you.
Actually, it was, I have no updates, but the reason for that is, is the liaison to the Rec Commission. We were supposed to meet last week, it got postponed, and they met tonight while we were meeting, so I will find out what happened there, and I can report to the board, but I let them know, apologies, that I wouldn't be at their meeting tonight because of this meeting. But I have nothing further.
Okay, Sean?
Sure. Quickly, so EDC met a few weeks ago, and there is an open position with Bonnie Sullivan stepping down after 14 years in the committee. We learned that also there, at one point, a few years ago, there was a town meeting article, and there's the ability to add another member. So we technically have two openings we can fill, which is good, because there has been significant interest in this committee, like, I don't know if we've seen this kind of interest before.
I don't think so.
So, yes. So at the next meeting of the EDC, there's going to be discussion of, should we be reconfiguring the committee a little bit? And, and I think our town manager has brought this up, I think the, because the town employees are doing a lot now themselves, especially there's, is it a Wednesday, weekly Wednesday meeting, where they're all involved with any new businesses that are considering coming into town? So there's an opportunity maybe to re-purpose some of those roles. So there's a meeting coming up, it'll be on that agenda, scheduled to be, and potentially a recommendation may come before this committee for a warrant article very shortly after that, I would imagine. So just a heads up on that. And the second thing is, I don't know if anybody's mentioned this, there's a big party this Friday. Right?
Yes.
Big block party this Friday. We had to just put it out there, committee, so.
Thank you very much, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. For myself, the one issue and correspondence, well, two items. One, as mentioned earlier, we've received a lot of correspondence related to some of the items on our agenda this evening. I want to thank members of the community for getting involved and communicating with us. Secondly, this coming September 11th is the 20th, 20th anniversary of the attacks. Select Board Member Marshall and myself are coordinating with Chief Purcell and the schools to put together a little bit more of an extended commemoration than has been done each year. We expected, we haven't finalized all of the plans at this point. Once we do, we'll, we'll make that public and share it on the town website, on the, hopefully on the billboards, and through social media. But we do expect the commemoration will begin at 8:30 at the 9/11 Memorial, at the corner of Milk Street and Grove Street. It's in the, it's in the southeast corner of the Fire Department parking lot. And we expect that part of the commemoration to run for about an hour and 15 minutes. So more, more details to follow. Earlier, there was one person who held up their hand about wanting to continue open forum. There's no one in the audience at this point in time, so there's no need to continue open forum. I will entertain the motions to move into executive session.
So I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions and preparations for negotiation of non-union personnel under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. That's it.
Okay, I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining and litigating position. The board will not be reconvening in open session. May I have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Shelby?
Marshall, yes.
Sean?
Keyo, yes.
Patrick?
Wilk, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
And Edinburgh, yes. By a vote of five, zero, zero, we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you, Aiden and Westboro TV, for broadcasting and simultaneously, simulcasting as well as managing our remote participation this evening. Thank you.